Session for Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty four business meeting. Do we do recall again? Okay, so please stand for the pledge.
Uh, Dr. Laurie, you lead us, please.
Thank you. There was no report out of closed session this evening. We have public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have any cards submitted?
I'm none submitted, and I see no public speakers.
Thank you. We begin with reports. We our student board members are busy this evening, and so we'll start with our bargaining units and begin with C S E A.
Hi, good evening. Nothing much to report except that our contract has been finalized. We've submitted it to C S E A in Sacramento to go through the six ten process. We'll be voting on it at the back to school when everybody comes back to school and classified staffer in the midst of getting their summer school assignments and ready to get started on that. Other than that, we're good to go.
Thank you. Lubufa Scott.
Uh, yeah, we also do not have a lot to report. We're trying to finish strong here at the end of the year, and we're also getting focused on summer school and getting ready to go from there, and that's about it.
Thank you. Have a school resource officer report this evening?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dan Lopez, your friendly neighborhood school resource officer, one of two, just be tonight. Dash, she's away for a couple of things. Have a lot to talk about, so I'll get straight to it. First and foremost, this is a very exciting first year for me as the new S R O. Lots of learn, learned a lot, and looking forward to continue learning and serving your guys' campuses. Well, one of the things I would like to talk about is the First Generation Club. For those of you who don't remember, I beat it like a dead drum all day. It's our group of students at the high school who identify themselves as the first in their family to plan to attend college, which is an amazing thing, I think. So we've attended multiple trips, including John Wayne Airport, Mission Hospital Trauma Center, and Super seventy-three, the e-bike manufacturing company. During all these trips, several students have voiced interest, if not proclaimed that they want to get into that field for one reason or another, which is something very exciting. Most students don't even know what they want to do upon senior years to see that several underclassmen, as well as seniors, have found what they want to do as a career. I think it's a very exciting thing to support. Coming up for our summertime, we have our team leadership academy. We have several students signed up. We're looking to tap out at twenty. The dates are going to be July twenty ninth through August second, where we'll be doing various exercises and visiting a couple of different sites to build leadership qualities in our students to help them build them to be the better leaders of tomorrow. I'm very happy to report that prom was an amazing success through our partnership with the admin at the high school and through the S R Os. No party buses, so we didn't have to turn anybody away, and I am very confident to say that it was almost a completely safe and sober event, which is a nice turnaround from our winter formal event. I think a big part of that, too, is the fact that we partnered up with the admin to do safe talks with our students, body classes during tutorial. We did presentations on the expectations of the school, expectations as our S R Os for safety, and had the real talk about what could happen if they got doing silly things, and that helped avoid a lot of things. I'd like to thank our partnership with the admin staff over at L B H S for helping us make that happen. Another thing I'm very proud of is our e-bike education. We've actually noticed a fifty percent reduction in traffic accidents, including e-bikes with our students overall for the past year. I think that's amazing, considering we had about twenty accidents in the past, and this time we only had about eleven for this year. I think that's an amazing leap and bound to see that bit of a cut in that short amount of time, just through education. Continuing with our A I talks, discussing digital citizenship and responsible use at both Thurston Middle School and at the high school. We've done that with every grade level. I'm looking forward to partnering with the admin to continue those talks hopefully in the future to make sure that our students understand the responsibility of A I and the safe ways to use them. Over at the high school, we recently did a mass casualty drill with the student E M T program, that's Emergency Medical Technicians. I myself was the E M T for almost ten years in serving the Los Angeles County area prior to becoming a law enforcement officer. I can say it's one of the most treasured memories and skills I've developed over my career. I'm very excited to see that class full of students who have that drive, desire to learn and to serve their communities as E M Ts. Myself, along with my partner Ashley and several fire department members, helped critique and participate in the drill, helping the students to understand the do's and don'ts of emergency response and essentially helping them mold themselves for a better future as an E M T student. And several of them are actually ready to take these state national registry tests, which will actually certify them as E M Ts. So I'm very proud to support that. The drill was a transformer explosion encompassing both fire and electrical burn victims. And it was a bit of a chaotic scene because our actors, our student actors were all moulaged up, fake blood, wounds. It was a very interesting sight. But nevertheless, it was an amazing event. I'm very happy it turned out the way it did. We even had Orange County Sheriff's helicopter come by for a flyby as if they were supporting the event, if it was actual a real drill or a real event. And then to recap everything, it's been an amazing first year for me. Still have a lot to learn, but I'm looking forward to partnering with all the admin at every site and continuing to have all the support each side. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks for all the work you've done for us. Appreciate it.
Looking forward into the year.
Next is superintendent's end of your report.
Good evening, Board of Education and President Vickers. We have our esteemed group of principals with us at the diocese tonight. One of the things that we've done over the last couple of years is do an end of the year wrap up and really highlighting kind of where where we've been and and also talk a bit about where we're heading. The principals have been providing in their updates to you just a general overview as well. So we'll tie all this back together, and that's the intent is to tie it all up for the for the end of the year and highlight some of the things that we do know. Obviously, we don't have all of the student data back for some of our assessment results. But we definitely know kind of where we're at progress wise and some of the information. So with that, we're going to kind of bounce around, so hopefully not too much, but it will should follow along pretty well. So tonight, we're going to cover our school outcomes. We'll also discuss a little bit about sustainability, and Jeff will cover a little bit about where we're at related to those areas of focus. So as you recall, probably have seen these a lot, especially more recently with our L cap. We have our focus on college and career readiness goals, our social emotional competencies, safe and equitable inclusive schools. And then last, but definitely not least, is the environmental impacts costs and our focus on environmental education and literacy. So those have been our four kind of guiding areas of focus this year. Obviously, my evaluation goals kind of live within live within these goals as well. So with that, we'll start with the first goal, college and career readiness skills with a focus on meaningful collaboration, creativity, communications, critical thinking, problem solving, and stewardship.
Right, kicking this off, both El Moro and Top of the World shared similar highlights and outcomes this year connected to goal number one. Our highlights were the result of collaborative work between the district and our talented staff members in an effort to continuously refine and improve our programs and systems and our learning experiences for students. M T S S remained a high level focus for our schools, targeting instructional needs for our students in both E L A and math. Our staff participated in eight learning walks across each of our schools, highlighting our work with the learner profile. We had fifty-three classroom teachers participating in our unit lesson and redesign. Thank you, led by Mike Morrison. We used Thrivally data to match library books, classroom projects, after-school programs to student strengths and interests. And our toasts has worked closely with staff to integrate visual and performing arts and technology in a meaningful learning experiences for our students. I just shared with board member Perry a picture this past week with our second grade cultural projects where we had our teacher working with our students, teaching ballet in connection to a historical project with them. And fourteen of our teachers worked in partnership with the Orange County Department of Education to focus on C G I, cognitive guided instruction, and the new math frameworks. Our January and our March P D sessions focused on this important work, and we look forward to working with the team next year to prepare for our math pilot and our future adoptions. Digging in a little bit deeper into our M T S S work, you can see that, as evidenced by our beginning and end of the year I Ready scores, our students made tremendous progress this year, increasing from fifty-one to eighty-five percent proficiency in tier one and significantly decreasing the number of students that participated in tier two and tier three interventions. This was done largely in part with the focus of our M T S S meetings and analyzing data within our professional learning communities and targeting student needs, coupled with our efforts in improving tier one instruction through our focus on redesign, redesigning learning experiences for our students. As we increased our tier one achievement and decreased our tier three gaps in comparison to the twenty-two and twenty-three school year, we did note that we had made some significant. To prepare students for CASP, and we will continue to look wait, look at ways to improve that student achievement in the year to come. And once again, this slide details our data by grade level and highlights the important work of our teams in closing achievement gaps for tier three. We would like to give our fifth grade teams a shout out for doing some incredible work in moving the needle on instruction and preparing our students for Thurston. You are welcome, Mr. Vidal. Districtwide, as more of our students move from tier three to tier two instruction, our focus will need to shift to providing some more support in those tier two students through our M T S S programs. Our P L Cs in collaboration with our coaches and trained math teachers that were noted earlier. I look forward to building upon this training to advance our work with our learners next year. This work will focus on concepts with problem solving, analysis, and authentic learning. Aside from our traditional M T S S structures, we expanded our systems this year to provide additional support to students through the implementation of summer learning programs, increasing accessibility of our K through six students with high needs to receive additional hours of care in collaboration with community partners, including the Boys and Girls Club. We increased our after-school programs to four sessions. We operated the majority of the school year with A S P. We extended our transitional kindergarten programs, and we began the process of opening up a preschool program, Houshtat El Moro. Our focus on the learner profile led to some pretty cool collaborative experiences with the middle and high school, middle and high schools, including the Yland Mobile Exhibit, applying unit designs with our kindergarten students traveling to the high school to the audiences for reading authentic stories written by their students. We have the L B H S Ceramic Squad visiting El Moro to collaborate with Ms. Stevens in our art lab and assisting their students with really impressive art projects. We also had Thurston students meeting with our fifth graders to work on community circles and build relationships and empathy for their transition into the middle school. We look forward to continuing to build upon these exciting experiences that we provide for our students in preschool through fifth grade with engaging and authentic learning opportunities.
Thank you for all the work you're doing over there. So for the middle school, we, by the way, it's been a really amazing year, looking back the last couple of years, putting like different pieces of the system together. And for the first time, I think, in my tenure at Thurston, it's been nice to have a lot of shared leadership at our school, be able to have a low level consultation, and then watch some of these things take shape. So that's been really nice. In addition to that, I just want to say that I really appreciate all of the resources that the district provides us, what you guys approve, what's provided to us by the executive cabinet. Because a lot of the work and the and the shared leadership that we have on our campus probably couldn't have happened without you. So I just want to say thank you for all of that. We're also looking for some building upon some of the momentum that we had and off of the learner profile this year. So our district level design team and our teachers went to creating tangible learning experiences in the classroom that would lift up those skills that we'd like to see our students embody from the learner profile. And going on to next year, we're looking for ways in which we can capture some of that work by developing digital portfolios, which is something I will build upon in the following slides. Very excited about our tutorial model. It's like night and day. Last last year, it was very much a rotation of six different subject areas, and now kids can pick and choose wherever they want to go to get additional support or get enrichment that they need, and we'll do our very best to maintain the ninety percent satisfaction rates that we got from our students. In addition to that, just very pleased to see the continued results from our intervention models. I mean, knowing that kids are going in there from a range of nine to eighteen weeks, or sometimes up to twenty-three weeks, but yet coming out with one point two to one point three years of growth is very impressive, and it says a lot about the teachers and the students and the work they're doing. And then I absolutely love the reflective practices that we now have with the Shadow of Student Day. I think it definitely brightens our day as well as students that we're also shadowing, and it offers a lot of solution-based ideas as we are observing students and seeing things firsthand about how we can fix them on our campus. That's something that I'm really proud about as well. And in addition to that, too, very excited about some of the work that we're doing with sustainability and environmental literacy. Big hats off to Gloria Harwood for a lot of the work that she's doing with our eco clubs here on our campus, as well as our English Language Arts Department and getting them to rethink books and seeing some of the things that's happening over the high school. It's very inspiring for our team to see some of that stuff also moving forward going into next year. Looking at our I Ready reading growth, we saw an overall reduction of students, and we had forty-eight students that shifted over into the proficient range, which is very similar to some of our results that we had last year, where we had about seventy-seven percent. It is a slight reduction from where we were last year in regards to that, but we also think in some aspects that it might be based on the timing of the I Ready, which actually followed our CASP assessments this year. That said, we were very hopeful that the added practice of book clubs will assist with our efforts and further targeting reading comprehension and in supporting our students. And I do know that we have eleven percent here in our tier three, and I just thought it was an important note that we had about sixty students on our campus with I E Ps as well, which constitutes for about eleven percent of that. The last time we were together, I happily reported that we had about point eight three years of average growth for the duration of eight to nineteen week intervention. And now with the last round of interventions that we supported with our students, we now see a one point two year of growth in the same average and duration of time. So our intervention model does remain effective. We also see that we're probably going to have to continue to target our current sixth graders, next year's seventh graders, and seeing a little bit larger of a need there among the other groups. And as you know, our overall goal is to have about eighty percent of our students at proficiency. And so we see that our seventh and eighth graders are right there in the mix, but we're going to have to have a little more targeted support for those students in our next score for seventh grade. Similar to last year's end of year scoring, we saw an increase in eighteen percent from beginning of year to end of year. Last year's starting point was at about fifty-seven percent. And we have, and this year we had just a little bit lower of a starting point. I think, believe it says fifty-five percent there. But with similar strides and nearly a hundred students moving into the proficient range by the end of the year. And again, as I mentioned, knowing that we're continuing to be at the eighty percent mark at the end of the year, we will continue to tinker around a little bit with our tutorial model to ensure that our students are getting the extra time that they need and support to obtain a proficiency in their math classes. Potentially increasing, one example with that would be potentially increasing the number of priority weeks that our English Language Arts and Math classes have, which is essentially additional time in those particular subject areas with teachers and students as they go through that particular rotation and pull students based on their needs and common assessments. Looking at math, we saw that our students perform slightly better in our intervention with one point three years of growth within the same range of intervention time, which is really tremendous. And interestingly, as we look at the breakdown of some of the our universal screener data, we noticed that our sixth grade group was the highest performing cohort, which is a bit odd, because, believe it or not, in some of the recent CASP scores that we received, we noticed that they were one of the more lower performing students, which goes to show you that we definitely need multiple data points to tell a full picture of our students. And then things that we're very excited about as we go into next year, one is definitely increasing parent engagement, which tends to, and I'm sure Jason could attest to this, which tends to taper off here at the secondary level, and especially around our interventions and the participation rates that we get. And so whether, you know, we're trying to increase our participation rates by hosting more student study teams and having more personal data conversations with parents to try to warrant more students to participate, or having personal conversations with other related academic needs, that will be one definite anchor that we're looking to move on for next year. We were also very excited about the work we did in targeting specific learning experiences, as I mentioned to you. And we're hoping that we can begin to continue that by showcasing their learning through digital portfolios, as I mentioned. And then also going into next year, we've also allocated more resources to our tutorial model, so therefore the team in which it's going to support it. And so we're looking for more enhanced extended opportunities for our kids going into next year as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. I'm also very honored to work with this team and appreciate the support that we're given to do the important work that we do with students on all fronts. So thank you, and I'm really excited to share what we've highlighted this evening for the year and and talk about the the work ahead. So for the high school, obviously, you've heard all of us say about the awareness and implementation of our learner profile. You're very aware that we started on a new bell scheduled journey this year, which really elicited a lot of great things for us as we have students navigate their high school experience. And we really do put the focus of our work on the student experience, providing relevant and rigorous curriculum as well as really building on the those essential soft skills that are outlined in the learner profile for students so that we can create optimal conditions for learning and a great high school experience for our students and our staff. I think we've had, we're, we've had a lot of challenges this year, but we've also had a lot of fun in doing the work that we do, and I think that that's important for our students to see. You can see that, and you've heard me talk about our Flex Time tutorial, which really is an essential part of our kind of systemic addressing of student needs, but also allows them to access really unique learning opportunities that they can use that time to really do focus on areas of interest or passion, but also allows our teachers to give students the support that they need when they're when they are in need. And here you can see our I Ready E L A results from fall to spring, and we have observed some steady progress here with a ten percentage point increase in our tier one students and both a five percent percent percentage point decrease in tier two and three. That for us means that thirty-five X thirty-five students exited our tier two and three bands, and we're really excited about that. The next slide represents really the the student by group and their performance bands. And I want to share with you that with our schedule and with the opportunity for tutorial, we are really provided teachers and students a targeted in-class support that support that really helps them build the skills where they may have deficits so that we can see that consistent movement in the years ahead out of tier two and tier three. If you go to our next slide, you'll see that something we're very excited about, which is significant progress in our I Ready math growth. You can see that we've had a fourteen point percentage increase in tier one from fall to spring in our I Ready assessment. And you could see the significant decreases right there, which really reflects fifty students of our of our ninth and tenth graders moving out of tier two and tier three. So we're very proud of that, and I'd like to say that we anticipate really great CASP results that mirror what we're seeing here with our I Ready as we move forward. And I also really, as we go into the next slide, I want to, I want to share just a little bit of a comparison about how the secondary schools can can really address students in need in the tier two and three level, right? You heard Principal Vidal talk about really being able to have students in these intensive supports that act as almost like a class that that can go from nine to eighteen weeks. We have to be a little bit more kind of nimble and creative at the high school, so we have really utilized our our tutorial time, but also the personal relationships and ownership that a teacher must take when students are not meeting the standard, right? And that was reflected. So our neediest math student would be participating in individualized math plans and goal settings. So these are data chats and teacher conversations with students, but also empowering the student to really set the goal that they want to accomplish to get themselves to standard. So there, I feel like if you were to talk to a student that they would feel empowered in their learning around that process. So and it's also done in community, right? So we're not doing this alone. It's teachers, students, and parents all in the know and going along that that journey. And what that looks like for a student is regular prescribed tutorials and efforts that help them build their skills. So I'm super proud of the work that our math team and English teams have done, but more so just the collective efforts of the M T S S team, which is our entire staff. So I'm very happy about that. Um, as we look forward, you've heard me say, you know, the ownership, the collective ownership that we have as a staff around the M T S S process has really allowed us to have some valuable and rich conversations around how we specifically support students through succinct and intentional actions. And that ranges from everything when we look at, you know, from start of year into summer school, what we do to support students that have gaps. So as an example, E L D. We have a E L D Academy because we noticed gaps in achievement and accessibility for our E L population. So we provided them with a month of targeted intervention prior to the start of school. Those are things that are specific, very intentional, and tailored for us to support the needs of specific groups of students. You think about our summer academies where we provide preventive and responsive interventions using the I Ready data to drive our work. Math Boost programs, which is really tailored, almost one legitimately, one-on-one tailored support and tutoring for students to build their skills. Touchpoints that are touchpoints that are relevant and meaningful for students and families. F A S A application process, right? Having education nights and supports for students and families to navigate that process where we've had this year with even with all the challenges that are F A S A online F A S A application. I see the I rolled D. I understand, but it's 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 real, and we we still met seventy-five percent of our seniors were able to complete the the F A S A. Now, our data is pretty early on, and I'd love to be able to compare that to the completion rates of other surrounding schools. But I feel like we pretty confidently supported a lot of students in that. And I'm really, really, when we talk about the work ahead, I'm really excited what the work that our Vapa team is doing around planning and creating itinerant opportunities for students to really explore the capabilities of Mr. Wickhop's Makers Lab, but also really to get involved in the arts in but also really to get involved in the arts in a different way than in a brick and mortar classroom. So it's learning business aspects, it's learning about different approaches that students can have an opportunity to explore in the, in the world of arts. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to that work that we're going to be doing moving ahead. And, and, and you've all heard Dr. Canenberg highlight some of our amazing summer interventions that include like what I've already mentioned, ELD Academy, but Jump Start Math. This year, I'm really excited that we are implementing, Dr. Canenberg and I worked together to implement a peer mentoring program, a peer tutoring program during the summer, where we'll have actual, our high school students that are skilled in certain areas support and, and, uh, help educate our students at summer school.
Pause there for any board questions.
I have a quick question, which John should probably know, but when we were talking about some of the scores and we were talking about comparing iReady and CASP, and it made me realize that I'm not sure I know exactly the populations for norming these scores. I know that CASP is just California, but is iReady national, right?
Yeah.
So that seems to raise some interesting questions about how you sort of prioritize the way we think about the test, right?
The smarter balanced is, is, um, I wouldn't say, well, it's national, but because you can be part of different consortiums, right? But it's same kind of general setup, like it's not based on the curve. It's based on standards met or not met, right? So however, each state reports it a little differently. And so that's where you can't compare yourself, California's score on a smarter balance or a CASP, which is what the overarching assessment system is. I don't believe you can make comparisons from state to state on a student's CASP score, however you can in an iReady score. So, um, yeah, so the direct correlation, so for example, as, um, Principal Vidal is pointing out and Dr. Allman, you may see lower iReady scores in a certain spot, but then the corresponding CASP score is, will be higher, potentially going in is what we're looking at as an option. The key though is that I think we recognize, we do a lot of assessing of our students and some days they take it super seriously and other days they don't. So it's a point in time, so we want to look at that as one data point. We kind of track that over, you know, not just one year, but look at it over multiple years because we'll see one group have very good scores one year, and then you may see an anomaly at the end of the year saying, you know, what happened there? Did we do something in terms of programming the test before or after? Or so, at some point where it wasn't, where they hadn't met all the things they needed to? Or was it just they had test fatigue and said, I'm not gonna, you're asking me to do too much as a sixth grader or eleventh grader?
Right, but we could compare our iReady scores to different states because.
Yes, we have national scores.
Yep, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I, I had a question on secondary, and these are, these are great numbers. Thank you guys. And thank you for pointing out some of the comparative end of the year figures from year prior, because it does give us some year-over-year data to say, are some of the things that we're doing, especially if they are things that we've done for a couple of years, working or not working, or we don't know yet. But on the interventions, the boost interventions, Mr. Vidal that you mentioned, and the math interventions, Dr. Allman that you mentioned, have you guys ever thought about trying to share some of the things that you're doing? Like you both have the Flex and the tutorial program. So, Dr. Allman, if there's things that you think worked really well with the way that you had mandatory interventions. And, Mr. Vidal, you mentioned some parents are unwilling to take advantage of the boost, which is kind of taking a kid out of a class and putting them into a different class, which you can do in middle school, but you can't do in high school, which is, I, I think what I heard you guys saying. I was reading between the lines. But if they're both successful, maybe in the years in the future, you would use a blend of both or experiment with those to see if, if that's a possibility, because it looks like you're getting really good results, especially in, in math specifically, you have some data on, on how that works and what great achievements you guys have made, a year, one point two years in one boost session. And I mean, Dr. Allman, you, you moved your math scores up to eighty-two percent, which was the highest in the district with all of the concentrated work in math. So anyhow, if you guys could comment on that, if you share your good work with each other.
I have some brief perspective I'd like to share. Any opportunity we have for articulation with the Thurston Middle School team, especially in the last eighteen months, I say with math specifically, has been very essential and rewarding in the sense that we don't necessarily look at how to systemically address the issues, but we do look at skills and, and, um, practices that really are impactful. And I, I have to say the TMS team has been very helpful, not only in, you know, kind of sharing as we transition students from eighth grade to ninth grade, what has, you know, what's worked well and, and what, um, what specific students may need, but just their, the approach and the idea sharing that the two teams have had. We want more of it, and I think the takeaway from our staff is they're, they're motivated to have more of that time. So I would say that we are kind of both confined to our current schedules. And, and for us, it's been helpful to have the eight-period day, but also to have the regular routine of tutorial four times a week on average that we can rely on for students to get the support that they need outside of the classroom.
Yeah. So do your math teams see the same data that we see? Do your, do your math teams see the same data that we see? And like, not obviously you see your own sites data, but do they see the adjacent sites data?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I would, I was just going to comment on, on Jason, so, um, definitely appreciate working with him and a lot of the things, to be honest with you, with tutorial and intervention classes, a lot of the things that we've been doing is very much in a pilot sense. And I say that because most of it is like, okay, does your students have the same flexibility? What type of offerings do you have? What kind of turnouts do you have for certain things? But I think this is probably the first opportunity I feel I had to see and hear some of the outcomes that he's had in regards to some of those practices. And so how wonderful that is to know, like, yeah, to your point, like even when I was talking to them and listening to some of the things that they were doing in regards to their reading and math scores, how enlightening it is to be able to like, share some of those things. And, and hats off to the executive team here, where, when we have leadership team meetings, there's often opportunities for us to share more about each other's practices at our sites and take ideas. And so I think as we are building teams within our own school and being reflective about our practices, I also do appreciate the modeling that happens at the, at the district level where we get to do that. And so I get to see that with similar goals that we have in regards to academics going into next year, I see more of that happening, especially as some of these, my colleagues are standing on the results that they have.
That's great. Thank you, guys, and thank you for allowing the, the time for that to happen.
I'm really excited about Dr. Allman talking about the peer tutoring during the summer. Could you tell us a little bit more about that? Are the students just volunteering to come in? Is it mostly in math? Is it in all subjects or kind of how that works?
Well, I have to give credit to Dr. Canenberg for the idea. And then we just kind, you know, it's easy, it's just as easy to say yes as it is to say no. So we said yes, and we started putting out calls for interest to our student population. So the nice thing is, and I'll talk a little bit about stewardship and community service later, but the nice thing is the students are there because they have an interest and want to be there. And we hope as we try this and, and go through the summer, that it's going to be impactful and meaningful for students and their academic achievement. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't know if they were getting something for volunteering or they're just doing it to help their fellow students and because they want to.
Well, I know they're getting a T-shirt.
Okay.
Sometimes that's enough.
Those T-shirts cost a lot now. That's it. And, and Mr. Vidal, I just wanted to ask a little bit about, you said you're going to put some more money into the tutorial, which I think is great. Is that for both parts of it, both the intervention and the enrichment part?
Essentially, it's, it's about the planning aspect of it. So we were offering a stipend for the position before, which is, you know, ten percent outside of the workday. And based on some of the numbers that we have within our school, we were actually able to allocate a period of time for an individual to work on this. And it has been kind of a growing program over the course of this year that has a lot of different data elements and monitoring where students are going and whether they're eligible for certain enrichment opportunities or whether they're actually designated to where they need to go. And also a lot of partnerships with CTE and bringing in career speakers. And so now with that, and having more, uh, an entire period of time for a teacher to be able to plan that, we do anticipate having more enrichment opportunities for our students.
Um, I just wanted to congratulate you all on such a great job of having a collaborative team and including Dr. Canenberg in there with their research aspects tied in and how creative you have been as far as in looking at individual students' needs and student success.
I just had a quick question, Dr. Allman, when you mentioned a targeted for the EL students the month before school. Is that, do they all, like, a group get invited to that? Is it mandatory or is it voluntary to come to that?
We do, we do not make it mandatory, but we do highlight the importance of the, um, of, of the experience during the summer. And our, our staff, Yadi has done a really good job of the outreach, and we kind of drive that point home. So I think I answered your question, but I, it's not mandatory. But we definitely try to get them in the seats and, and attending.
Thank you. Now for the questions, we can move on to Goal Two. Thank you.
All right. Uh, as, as you all know, this has been a real important goal for us as a school district, especially, actually was in place pre-pandemic, but it became even more important post-pandemic as we're really working to support the entire whole child, specific to kind of self-identity and, and really trying to engage them and have positive relationships. So I'm really proud of the work at our school sites. You as a board should be proud as well, and, and because you've made a huge commitment to this in terms of funding additional counselors, additional work, and the Family Research Center is a part of this as well. So much appreciation goes to, to you all for being so supportive of this. And I, and I know you'll look forward to kind of hearing a summation from the principals as well.
Good evening. I'm excited to get to work, share about the work that we're doing around SCL. This is a topic that I care about deeply. I think as we're seeing information and technology growing exponentially, it's even more important that we are explicitly focusing on the whole child, that we are adding empathy and compassion, self-awareness and perspective-taking to humanize the academics. Those are the critical elements when we think about future needs for our local and global communities. So at TOW and Almora, we have, again, similar highlights, actions and outcomes connected to Goal Two. Each of our sites have prioritized SCL lessons. We've highlighted a PBIS reboot, which is the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. We've engaged in ongoing restorative practices and have had an increase in school attendance through targeted interventions. At TOW, I have to shout out Mrs. Nadia Hart and Ms. Megan Murda, both of whom have been leading the SCL and the behavioral components of our MTSS work this year. They, along with their team members and all of the teachers at Top of the World, really own the organic and authentic instruction of SCL every day in what students experience in the classroom, uh, which is so powerful for the way students learn about both themselves and the world around them. Um, at TOW, our counselors and student support specialists have led monthly classroom lessons or grade level assemblies to introduce and teach skills such as conflict resolution and growth mindset. All of our teachers and staff have been introduced to circles and restorative practices via our March PD at Top of the World and or through different PD days with Karen Yonker, a consultant that both Top of the World and Almora have been working with the past two years. And our grade level teams are using these practices for instruction as well as community building and as a technique for responding to behavior. Finally, all of these efforts, along with the targeted intervention around chronic absenteeism, have also led to improved attendance outcomes with over ninety-five percent year-to-date attendance. Similar to the way we use iReady and Dibbles to monitor students in need of academic intervention, we use the SRS and other screeners to make sure that we're monitoring for students who need additional interventions for either externalizing or internalizing behaviors. It's good news to see that our low-risk numbers are increasing from fall to spring. And the other good news, of course, is that while in the spring we do still have those students who have the internalizing or externalizing behaviors, when we get that report, the first thing we hope for, and we were able to check off and say, yes, we did this, is every kid in the red and yellow, we know by name, and we can quickly and easily say, yes, they're already in one-on-one, or they've already, they're having group. And it's still taking a while to impact, but they are getting those needs met. And so that's a really exciting thing. We will probably always have students who are in the red. That's just part of life, that sometimes you're going through the internalizing or the externalizing, but that we are able to meet those needs is important. Our school-based counseling services, so speaking of supports, our counselors, student support specialists, and school psychologists are busy humans. We provide individual and group counseling for short-term needs as well as ongoing counseling support for some of our students who have counseling goals written into their IEPs. We have, we conduct risk assessments and threat assessments as needed. And then we also do short-term interventions, which could include things like conflict resolution. When you have kids as young as four and as old as about eleven or twelve, there's a lot of different types of conflict they might have, whether that's fighting over the blue blocks in the kindergarten yard or sometimes, you know, having secrets that are, were told in conference that have been shared in the classroom. And so our counselors support students in understanding how to experience and move through conflict. We do check-in, check-out with a good number of our students. So that's a behavioral and, and/or an emotional support where the counselor, the student support specialist, or the school psychologist typically meet with a student at the beginning and end of the day to help do those short-term goals. And then sometimes when it's a really high-need student, they will periodically add in check-ins throughout the day as well. And then, of course, standalone check, counseling check-ins, which are either based on student self-referral or an adult referral. That could be the teacher, an additional staff member, a parent, or a family member. So again, as you see, our counseling teams are hardworking. At the elementary level, our primary focus has been on the key, three key areas, mental health services, social emotional support, and student agency. We've placed a strong emphasis on school-based mental health services, including the mental health awareness among students, staff, and parents, implementing mental health screeners to identify students in need and providing timely and effective interventions for those requiring support. By fostering a culture of awareness and early intervention, we aim to ensure that every student has the necessary resources to thrive emotionally, socially, and academically. In addition to the mental health services, we have integrated a robust social emotional learning curriculum into our daily teaching. Utilizing our multi-tiered systems of support, we are assessing and intervening in students' social emotional needs, ensuring they receive personalized support. And furthermore, we promote restorative practices to build that positive school culture and effectively address conflicts, fostering a sense of community and mutual respect. Empowering students through student agency is another cornerstone of our approach. I know at Almora, that was one of the shining examples would be the Sea Lion Squad. At Top of the World this year, we had Topper's Team. But those are ways that are age-appropriate and engaging opportunities for students to develop voice and agency in their school setting. We encourage students to recognize and build on their strengths using the Thrive Lee platform, which Julie mentioned earlier, supporting the strength-based learning. And additionally, we give students a voice in their learning and school activities, fostering a sense of ownership and responsibility, all of which is crucial for their personal development. As we're looking forward to the upcoming school year, we're committed to continuing and expanding these initiatives. We want to maintain our focus on restorative practices by implementing peer-to-peer community circles as well as the cross-site circles that Julie referenced when Top of the World or Almora partner with Thurston at the end of the year. Although we've discussed maybe doing it a little earlier next year, that'll, that'll be on you to keep that idea alive with our fifth grade students coming and to meet with the middle school students a bit earlier to help get the anxiety, but also form those connections earlier. Additionally, we plan to integrate cyber stewardship into our PBIS framework to promote responsible and safe online behavior among students. Reducing chronic absenteeism will remain a priority, and we aim to integrate attendance strategies into our MTSS system to ensure the students are present and engaged in their learning. Moreover, we will continue our efforts to reduce behavioral incidents and referrals through the proactive and supportive measures, hopefully creating a more harmonious school environment. Through these focused areas and, and upcoming steps, we strive to create a nurturing, an inclusive, and an empowering educational experience for all of our students. And our commitment being to prepare them for that successful future, both academically and personally, ensuring they're equipped with the skills and support necessary to thrive.
All right. Thank you, schooler. Looking at Goal Two, there was a lot of excitement behind this school for us. Looking at goal two, there was a lot of excitement behind this school for us this year. We were able to clean up and refine a lot of our practices around PBIS. And I mentioned before, a reduction of sixty-three percent in our referrals for the year. I want to have a big shout out and big kudos to our behavioral team who's worked behind the scenes to analyze those problems of practice and make some shifts to refine the work and improve those practices across our campus. Secondly, too, really big around our attendance team. And the amount of work they did and the amount of parent outreach that they had in really trying to remove as many barriers as possible for our students. Which shows and the shifts that we've made in our chronic absenteeism from eleven point two percent to six point six percent, which is lower than some of the pre-pandemic marks that we've had before. But we feel like we can continue to grow as well, as, as Megan said, and hopefully pushing that to less than five percent for the upcoming year. Also very thankful for the amount of outreach that our counseling team had. I will go through a long list of different things that they do, but I think the most important one that they had, at least for me and for the students, was a huge influence on the level of classroom lessons that they delivered throughout the year. And so in the slides ahead, I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then this year, I think we laid the foundation for something that's really important around digital citizenship. And we recognize at the middle school that we're having more and more students coming into our school, not really knowing the privileges and responsibilities that come along with owning a cellphone. And sometimes maybe the necessary oversight to navigate that world. And so we feel very obligated, one, to have increased parent outreach to increase their awareness as well as limit the usage that we can on our campus. And then also educate our students more about the pros and cons of technology and those implications. So in partnership with the high school this year and going into next year, we look forward to some of that momentum and helping to support this ever-changing situation. Two things that we're really excited about were, one, the consistency of practices that our, that our staff members had around positive reinforcement as well as student and parent communication. That was a huge part in the reduction of the referrals that we had, where we changed some of the communication that we had from teachers to parents as well as students. And therefore, we're able to partner with them on helping to reduce our rates, along with a few other adjustments that we had in regards to PBIS. In addition to that, with our outstanding student-to-counselor ratios, we were able to see increases in all levels of support. And so if you consider the number of SART meetings or behavioral executive functioning groups or tier-one classroom lessons, which we had about seventy-four of those happening this year, around needs assessments of study skills, stress management and organization, things that were commonly coming up in our student and community needs assessment. I'm very appreciative of that work that that group is continuing to do. Looking at just quantifying a little bit of some of the big celebrations that we had around positive reinforcement this year, with increases in numbers of students being recognized and whether it's special student and staff lunches, raffles or community events, especially this lunch with a wave rider, which is becoming quite a phenomenon. It's looking like Woodstock several times a year on our campus and for several hours on our campus during that time too as well. And nothing excites a middle schooler more than some great food and friends. So it's looking forward to increasing the number of guests and opportunities that we have with that over the year. I also want to take a moment to thank our PTA who have really provided a lot of resources to allow some of these great student enrichment opportunities for our kids. And also to Ms. Hammer, who continues to generate these ideas about campus celebrations and student-staff recognitions. Looking at our, here are some general metrics that we put together to reflect this school year. What is not listed here is the two thousand seven hundred and forty total contacts that our counseling team has done with primary, primarily most of those being one-to-one student meetings as well as parent outreach. We've also had a hundred and four contacts as students meted through school attendance meetings alone this year, which also, as, as I mentioned, was a huge lever in reducing our chronic absenteeism going into this year too. And as I mentioned, you know, we had seventy-four different classroom lessons around study skills, stress management and organization. But what I didn't mention too was that there's this wonderful byproduct that also happens when counselors push into classrooms. It also allows many of our teachers to collaborate around student needs as well. And so collectively, it's been a nice contribution to our overall multi-tiered support and programming. So as we go into next year, definitely looking to continue on in that momentum of positive reinforcement and the, and the momentum that we have with PBIS. As I mentioned, really trying to push below five percent with chronic absenteeism. I absolutely believe our team can do that. Having some little inquiry around researching models and implementing best practices around digital citizenship and ways in which we can do that, we've already added several introductory lessons into the beginning of next year. And what we call our WOW lessons, as students are kind of being baptized onto the campus or acclimated at the beginning of the year. We kind of go through different emergency preparations or behavioral expectations and we will also be now including digital citizenship to start that off and then looking for ways to have more continuity throughout the year. Very excited about the newfound wellness center that we're going to be having and also joining the high school in that particular journey. And so having an opportunity for our students to have a place for mindfulness or to help with stress management, which would be very nice. And then finally, again, looking at ways in which we can go through this inquiry cycle, research best practices and ways to improve school connectedness and also reduce our suspension rates by looking at ways and educative alternatives to traditional discipline. Thank you.
Similar to the Thurston Middle School team, the high school team is very excited about the work around goal number two. I've always been a kind of a culture and experience kind of person and I just really, this is a passionate part of the work for me. I really enjoy watching our students develop and grow into awesome young adults. That's why the first highlight you see up there is a first-generation student group for me. And it, and it actually goes beyond just that group, but I thought about what the first-generation student group meant to us. And you heard SRO Lopez kind of highlight what they have had opportunities to do. But it's all around supporting them and their growth and self-discovery. But really, when we talk about goal two, we're talking about intentional focus and work around the student experience, not only for first gen, but all students, and extension of learning opportunities outside of the classroom that are mostly student-driven with their voice and choice around what they're learning and connecting that, that learning experience with the student interests. So that in turn transfers those experiences into long, livable soft skills that are found in our learner profile. So to me, it just is connecting all those dots and really getting ready to navigate our WASC self-study and accreditation visit coming up. Everything is being just tied really well together. You can see that, you've heard me mention before around our, our MTSS approach and what it's meant for us as it relates specifically to attendance and those numbers where we're approaching pre-pandemic reduction in chronic absenteeism. But for, the important part of that is the, the work with the families and the partnerships we build in our most difficult cases so that those students and families feel supported. We also, our, our schedule and the systems we have in place, specifically with tutorial and the variability that students have with an eight-period day really allows us to be responsive to student needs and allows us to address any significant or relevant issues that may arise in our school community. I'll share a little bit of some anecdotal stories about that later. But it's really helped us, that fact alone and the opportunity that we have within our schedule has helped us, I feel, build a really strong and cohesive school community, right, for our, for, most importantly, for our students and their experience, but also for our families and our greater school community. Like I said, I'm a big culture, climate and experience guy. So here we have, I look at this in two ways at the high school. We have some formal channels that allow us to really build school culture and climate and that's, you know, our student leadership and ASB team that has grown, even as we face a little bit of a decline in enrollment, our, our numbers in student leadership and the opportunities that students are seeking around leadership has grown. I'm really happy and proud of that. Our Student Senate, another formal environment where students that might be on the non-kind of traditional leadership track can provide input, perspective and drive some work on our campus. Of course, you've heard us talk about peer mentors. We have a number of student-run clubs. These all help build inclusive and positive campus culture for us. Sometimes visitors on our campus will visit during lunch or, and they always make a comment that it feels like a college campus in a sense, because it's all, you see all student-driven activities, student-driven conversations, and it's just a great thing to, to be witness to. So, you know, with staff like Ms. Lumblad and Ms. Quigley that run our student leadership and, and other team members, it allows us to really help students implement their vision, not only around specific school events like dances and other leadership events, but really that represent the high school experience and the LBHS culture. It's been great to see these, these kind of culture implications extend beyond the walls and doors of our classrooms. And really, what I appreciate the most is watching students grow around their importance of stewardship and utilizing their community service obligation they have for graduation to really do something meaningful and purposeful for themselves, but also their greater school community. So obviously beyond our teachers, the counseling and student support staff take a really exacted approach in how they support students with grade-level conversations, topic-specific meetings and conversations and individual meetings with students. Really happy about that work. And here you could see that the, the numbers on this chart represent only our socio-emotional contacts with students. But I want to make sure that we highlight the, the feeling of connectedness that our students currently feel is at eighty-one percent. And I also want to highlight that to a comparative data point, which is pre-pandemic statewide school connectedness was reported at fifty-five percent. So that is a number that we as a staff are very proud of, because I think our students attend and experience high school, but also leave saying that they had a very connected and supported high school experience. Also want to highlight, when we factor in college and career contacts in, in our little office there in the, in the library, you can add contact points, over sixteen hundred of our student contacts have been made in the College and Career Center at above sixteen hundred. And then when we actually do throw in the academic contacts with our school counselors and our stu-, our school social worker, we're over four thousand. So it's a pretty impressive set of numbers that revolve around student contacts and support for them while they're on campus. In addition to that, we consistently rece-, as you've heard me highlight, we consistently receive information about students feeling connected and supported by staff, as I just highlighted there. But you can see in the four quadrants on this chart, how we really break down those contacts with student, with our school counselors and those look like specific, grade-level, specific plans, where we talk about four, four-year plans with students. There's also small group contacts to highlight just a couple. And our student support specialists are really utilizing our well-space to make contacts with students and medium-sized groups, small groups or even individual group settings. And one of the things I'll highlight later is how we as administrators get to be in front of students now with our current schedule, which allows us to be in front of them to do specific tutorials on topics that students might need to hear about from us or that we deem as a student group that they want to hear more information around. And then, of course, on that lower right-hand corner, you can see one of our, our, the, our numbers for student-to-counselor ratios. I, I have to highlight that it's probably one of the lowest in the state, if not the nation, but it really allows us to do some great work. And as you've heard me say before, when we talk about goal two, we really talk about the opportunity to be responsive to student and school community needs. And you see, looking forward, we're going to continue to refine that work. Because we, again, you're going to get tired of hearing me say this, but it's important and I talk to Superintendent Valori about it all the time, is that tutorial allows us to have structured, in-bell opportunities to contact students and it doesn't compromise the coursework that they're in, which to me is very important, especially at the high school level, because we don't always have that flexibility to pull a student out of a course to get them the support they need. So this allows us to accomplish that, but it also, more importantly, allows us to have students drive what they can learn and access during that time, right? So the adults on campus are able to give students what they need when they need it. But more importantly, students are, are, it's just a great self-actualization opportunity where students can explore passion projects, learn something more about, you know, something that they might be studying in a class. Anecdotally, I'd like to share that our librarian, Mr. Warren, who we all know and love, he just did a random like questionnaire with students and it was a ask your librarian a question kind of thing. And the part of the question response set was, are you asking this question because you are, your teachers are making you learn something? Or are you asking it because you're passionate about it? And surprisingly, there was a two-part question that elicited the data set that our students have to learn something, but thirty-five percent of the time, they're also passionate about it. So it made me feel good that we're, we're hitting on something that students have to learn, but they can still find a way to be passionate about it, which is great. And again, you've heard us, as we move forward, we're going to continue to be responsive to the needs that we have. We had a, an issue as president, our principal of it all referenced around you, you know, digital citizenship and responsibility. And we took an opportunity that could have really been more disciplined and punitive and we turned it into a learning experience where we had really valuable conversations with all grade levels that were student-driven, that they, they were able to ask questions on the topic. And we found that we had some common ground between students and staff where we really found a need that we wanted to learn more and explore more about the use of AI and how the responsibility that comes along with that in, in learning. And we found some common ground between teachers and students around that issue that we'll continue to work forward and you look, do work as we move forward and use our tutorial time to do so. We also want to increase our, our understanding of student needs. And that's done, as you've heard me talk about previously, with our needs assessment. We do that two times a year. Counselors push that out and we provide, we provide response to whatever the students are in need of. That really drives our counseling contacts and then really increasing our parent-face-to-face communication and interaction. This year, one of my biggest growth areas was our, we decided as a LBHS PTA to do PTA walks. And it was a nice environment to get to know families outside of a regular PTA meeting or if they were coming in to talk about something specific to their student. It was just nice to be out on, on our track or out in the community, walking and talking and building relationships. I really enjoyed that this year. It was a big growth area for me. Thank you.
Yes, this is probably from Mike Keller. And I would let him come up and someone can do a question. I'm, I'm just interested in self-harm and threat assessments and the difference between Elmore and Top of the World. And when you also go on, look through Thurston and then to the high school, what your thoughts are, but I'll give you my pad. I'm sure Joan has a question. It'll give him time to come up here.
Okay. So the question has to do with the comparative data between TOW and Elmore, because I think TOW has fifty percent more students. But at least twice the number of, yeah, fifty percent more. Elmore has two-thirds the, the number of students that TOW has. Okay, same difference. But twice the number of referrals. So I'm wondering what the differences are perhaps in school practices around. Um, but twice the number of referrals. So I'm wondering what the differences are perhaps in school practices around, um, yeah, unless I'm reading this wrong, but I think that's what I see, that if you look at the, if you look at the list for the elementary schools of all of the, um, opportunities for students to meet with a counselor or be referral referred or to do group counseling, it's twice the number at TOW. So I was just wondering if there are practice differences or what might account for that.
Oh. Okay, so you have elementary data, uh, in particular, you're asking about the self harm and, uh, risk assessment, threat assessment, differences in the numbers that you're seeing with elementary and middle school and high school. Obviously, these are really anomalous situations that we have with students, really low frequency and high intensity. So we can't really predict what level we'll get with students, but we want our, our staff members who are qualified and ready to be able to field and inbound those, those concerns. And be able to use an evidence based approach to assess the level of risk. So there's self harm risk, which is obviously risk of harm to yourself, suicide, suicidal ideation, suicidal risk factors, and then there's threats which are external risk factors. Sometimes they're comorbid. You can have both. You can have self harm risk and threats to others compounded with that's, with that situation. We treat threats to others is also a disciplinary related situation potentially. And so there's a, we, we often partner with our school resource officer to also take into account other situations there. The differences in the numbers though, with the elementary, between the school sites, it's just the difference in the rate of students that were identified and referred for an assessment. These could have been many of these, most of these that are assessed are found to be low risk or no risk. Some of these are found to be moderate risk or high risk, and when those happen, we refer to secondary parties or third parties to get additional support.
Or if there's different practices in place there, because it's.
We have common practices across the district. We, we follow best practice approaches in both self harm risk, self harm at risk assessment and threat assessment.
Yeah, no, I was just looking at the whole chart, okay, not just self harm.
I can also add a little bit, uh, as far as what Elmore might have done a little bit differently this year because we did add the SEL team, our counselors to our MTSS team this year, and we meet weekly. During those times, we analyze the number of referrals that come into our systems. And then we determine where those referrals are coming from. Is it unstructured time? Is it, uh, consolidated to a grade level? Um, do we have a school wide issue? Is it at the lunch tables? Where is it? So we, we've changed that practice this year at Elmore, and with that, we pushed more support into what we call the tier one level of instruction. So those, even though our counselors are doing a significant amount of root work, it may be with a larger group of students within the classroom, um, rather than individual or small group counseling. So that may, that may result in a shift of our numbers. So something different, I personally felt it was effective at our school, um, with reducing overall the amount of referrals that we saw from last year to this year. Does that answer your question? And just one other.
Term interventions up there goes from a hundred and six at Elmore to two hundred and fifty four top of the world. Is that, has to do with the personality of the counselor? Uh, it just seems such, such a big difference between the two locations.
Well, and I can say because we actually also do a weekly, the, the same like MTSS meets weekly, it's with the student support specialist counselor. We get our referrals. I think the other reality is sometimes, and I don't know Elmore's cohort or vice versa, but sometimes you just have a cohort that has more need and you have to be responsive to the kids in front of you. And so there is the, the, the delta and number of kids which will account for some of it. So when we're having, you know, a hundred and thirty more students in one school than a different school, you should see a difference in counseling needs, I would, you would assume. But I think beyond that, sometimes it's just the cohort of students on any given year, you need to be responsive to them.
Did, did you have additional follow up questions, Dr. Kelly? Did you have any additional follow up question on that? Sorry.
Your question was, or a comment was, it's nice to see if the high school goes down as far as the self.
Yeah, so.
So I think, I think we're doing something as far as getting the kids in grade school and concentrating, following up in high, in middle school, and then high school, it looks, the great statistics.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I, I think that, you know, this is one of those statistics that, um, I'd almost be, this is one of those double edged swords where you'd almost be alarmed if it was zero. And so we want to have our staff be readily available in the event of a crisis for a student. So we're going to track and report this information. We do want the prevention systems of care in place. We, we work really hard to elevate the, the awareness around mental health issues and, and that we have qualified staff on site to be able to respond to those needs in a careful manner. So, um, yeah. And so, yeah, we want to, we do want to continue to have those, those numbers go down though. If you look at the California Healthy Kids Survey data, which is not reported here though, our overall rates of suicidal ideation relative to previous years has gone down significantly and compared to other local education agencies is, is somewhat, is quite a bit lower. So that's really positive, positive trends.
Any other questions? Are we going to goal three?
Thank you. I just wanted to say I'm really happy that elementary, middle and high school are all working on digital citizenship. I think that's becoming more and more important. I was at a CSBA online conference and people were asking for more guidance from the State Department of Ed that hadn't, hadn't gotten. But thank you for taking the lead in doing that.
All right, uh, and goal three, um, again, kind of is a, has been a focus for many years. We've, uh, and I can appreciate the board's emphasis in this area, whether it's, um, making changes to the plant and the structure of the schools themselves for safety and security to supporting, uh, the ongoing work at our school sites. Um, and, and district wide in terms of the trainings, um, we take this goal very seriously. We want our students to feel uh, safe on campus because we know that having a safe place is allows them to, uh, to learn. So with that, Dr. Rachel.
Sure. Um, this year, our elementary schools had a lot to celebrate relative to our achievements in creating self, safe and equitable schools. And as you saw at our board recognition night on, uh, last week, we reclassified eleven of our English lan- language learners to, uh, English proficient. And our EL students moved from forty three to eighty three percent tier one instruction in ELA and thirty six to seventy nine percent tier one instruction in math. And those were all based upon targeted interventions. And I want to give a shout out to Yudira Reynolds for a lot of that work. This year, we also tried something new with expanding our after school programs to four sessions. We had seventy one percent of our elementary school students participating. We also offered some new classes, including the Sea Lion Squad and a book club that was based upon a, a highlighted author locally Laura Finley Evans, and both of those were free to our students. I will say that while we, while we tried that four session, we'll go back to a three session last year. It was something that we experimented with, uh, and needed to drop a lot of classmen, classes uh, because we had lower enrollment overall in four sessions versus the success we had with three. So we're, we're doing some tweaks with that with school power. Um, and we'll, we'll go back to that, but also create some longer sessions within those three sessions. As we continue to find ways to support the unique needs of our students, we also offered a before school class to get our students grounded through strategic movement and sensory integration. And this actually resulted in a decrease of office referrals for our targeted students. Uh, we also offered a before school occupational therapy class, targeting fine motor school skills for our kindergarten and first grade students as well as an after school math, uh, and reading clubs. And I'd like to thank Irene White for her, for her work and collaboration with those. Family art nights were held in the fall and the spring at both of our schools, and both of those were filled to capacity. Our sites collaborated with PTA to offer Parent Education Night focused on cyber safety, and we also filled capacity with that too. We look forward to continuing this work, as you said, uh, next year with our parents. Finally, both of our schools increased student agency through the implementation of new student leadership programs as Ms. Schooler, uh, spoke about before with Topper's team and the Sea Lion Squad, as well as the Sea Lion Senate. We're proud to work, proud of this work that we do surrounding academics, and we argue that oftentimes this work of heart in building our kids is equally as important as we build strong leaders, confidence, and then we bring, build that character that leave that legacy within our communities.
In highlighting some of the secondary events that support safe, equitable and inclusive schools, I think it's easy to list just the activities and events that we may have on campus, like a FAFSA workshop or a college visit. Um, but also the structure that we have for students and their routine, uh, which is not, uh, which includes, but it's not limited to co teaching uh, for students with IEPs in the, in, uh, regular classrooms, um, our communication to home. But most importantly, I think as, uh, in the work we've done at the secondary, uh, just the, it also includes the elementaries is the, um, the transition support that our students provide students from elementary going into middle school, high school, uh, supporting students from middle school going up into the high school and just building the excitement and community and camaraderie around that has been, uh, a really great thing to see this year specifically. I think we've had a lot, a lot more significant events where our high schoolers have been able to connect with middle school students. Um, and I think that Chase and Carter have been great at outreach to get student voice and encourage the student voice from all campuses that's heard here. Um, so I feel those events that, and the systems that we have in place that allow each of our sites to create positive points of contact for parents and students really, um, help us build, uh, safe, equitable and inclusive, uh, school environment. I can say, um, when I was in school, the safety preparedness was kind of relative to crawling under a desk for an earthquake. Uh, oh, how things have changed, um, obviously, and, uh, one of the more, you know, new things that we have in safety requirements is the power safety shut offs, uh, that we have to include in our safety plans, which is when Edison may shut off the power schools. So things run the gamut and around that, in order to be ready, we have to constantly train our staff constantly attend, uh, trainings. Uh, so we have a really, uh, great safety team that meets regularly. We have a sub team that, that continues their education and loops that back to all of staff. So you can see that both our students and staff and our families, uh, feel that our campuses are safe. And that's because we, we're very proactive in nature. And, um, again, appreciate the board's work, appreciate the SRO, uh, Logan Beach Fire Department. Um, uh, Orange County as a whole has been, uh, fantastic around being really proactive, knowing that we don't know what's going to come, but if we're not prepared for every inevitable thing, we're not going to be prepared at all. So, uh, again, uh, this has been something that's been, uh, at the forefront, uh, of our teams. Uh, special thanks to Victoria Ryan and Jeff for all of their proactive work in this area. This will continue to be something that we bring forward, uh, whether it's through facilities, master planning, um, or whether it's through just generic trainings that we have to do. Um, we take all these very seriously. From, uh, a professional development side of the house, uh, we've reported on this before. Um, I've been in many districts, uh, I, you do not see statistics like this, um, where you have, you know, nine, almost ninety percent of our staff, um, feeling as though the professional development that we offer makes a difference in their classrooms. Um, and that they feel supported. That's, that's a huge testament to the work that happens both on an instructional services side and human resources side. And in all honesty, the leadership at the school sites who are helping to inform these professional development opportunities. Uh, one of the most, more recent ones has been, again, you've heard it a lot, the collaboration between our instructional services team and our technology services department related to the unit lesson redesign work, uh, that has had a huge impact. I know, I mean, Scott's been a part of that. Um, probably on more than one occasion even in terms of supporting people too through that process. Because once they go through it, the other people start asking them questions about how, what was it like? Um, and we use them oftentimes to recruit others to, to join in that program. So, again, uh, we work really hard on, uh, tailoring this to both our certificating classified staff. Um, and the results kind of, uh, prove it out there in terms of, uh, the, the staff responses. Not to be forgotten in personalized experiences, uh, we use the same approach with our students. And Dr. Allman, Joe, uh, Megan and Julie, they all mentioned the experience opportunities for our students. And I think, um, you can see it in the number of classes we offer at the high school level. Um, in terms of just, uh, forming arts classes, honors classes. Um, you're looking at the amount of clubs, having a high school student myself, I can speak to the fact that, uh, we have so many clubs of interest, and if there isn't one that exists, students are, give an opportunity to create one. Um, which is, which is amazing. I think, I don't know, Chase, you, you're probably in twenty clubs. He's, does everything. Uh, but if you talk to high school students about the efforts our high school makes, uh, to reach out to the students and see that happening at the, um, middle school level, we've added programs. Uh, moot court, uh, has, has been a new addition, uh, to the middle school. Mock trials coming has been an addition at the high school, along with all the things that we continue to offer. So we may be small, but we are mighty in terms of what we offer. Uh, and the elementary schools are along that same line with seventy one percent of our students taking a part in after school programming. We know there's a need there. We have, uh, significant investment thanks to the board on our lead programming over the summer, um, which will be upcoming. We're excited about getting that going again this summer. Um, and we have pals, we have leadership. So you can see the goal, uh, of all of our sites has been to be inclusive, uh, finding ways to bring all students to the table. Um, so proud of the work that our sites are doing in this area.
So as you can see, while we only have three focus areas within each of those four focus areas, we've done an extraordinary amount of work. Um, and while we've done a lot of new work, we've also done a lot of refinement that makes the work we've been engaged in more efficient and valuable. Um, we've been strategic this year in strengthening partnerships with our SROs, with our parent education events. We partnered with our community agencies for our safety work, um, school safety work and drills. And then we've fine tuned our work beyond academia that results in closing achievement gaps in attendance, um, as well as increasing student engagement across our campuses. Additionally, we've added some new programs that have been a huge success at our sites to gather that student agency and student voice and to build responsible servant leadership. As we look forward to next year at our elementary sites, we'll do some work to restructure our peer mentorship programs. We want to continue to identify unique me, needs and to match those supports. Um, with those needs, we did that a little bit later in the year this year and, uh, with collaboration with Irene White. And we, now that we know that it's been successful, we'll start that earlier next year. Um, we look forward to implementing our new preschool program and expanding on the newer work with our parent groups surrounding the reasonable use uh, and responsible use of technology.
Similar to the elementary work, we, we are excited and appreciative of our school resource officer relationship, uh, that we've had with Officer Lopez and Officer Crotein. Um, they've really been an integral part of our student education series with the admin team. When we have to, when we talk about, um, everything from, you know, that we don't, we don't ever start our, our conversations with, don't do this, don't do that. But we do want to have, make sure students maximize their opportunity around the experiences we offer them at the high school. So when we had some challenges around some of our, our dance events, we had, we took it a nu- again, as another learning opportunity to really bo- uh, bolster understanding around expectations, but also more importantly, you know, what they're going to get out of that, participating in that high school experience, building memories, connections with students and staff and things of that nature. Um, we're also really a luck, uh, uh, fortunate with the resources that we have to continuously, uh, enhance and upgrade our camera systems on campus to create a, a safe and, and appropriately monitored environment, uh, as well as training. Now, when we say training, we do participate as a staff in various tr- uh, trainings around campus safety, um, evacuation drills and things of that nature, but we also take an opportunity to train students in general. Um, general knowledge around responding to potential incidents that could take place in school. And again, you're going to get tired of me, uh, saying this, but we utilize our tutorial time to really do that by grade level so that students understood. Um, you know, evacuation scenarios or any other, um, scenarios that may compromise safety while they're on school campus. And we had an opportunity to do Q and A with students in the freshman group, sophomore group, so on and so forth, to really make sure they had, uh, an understanding of what the expectations would be, were anything to happen like that on campus. Um, and additionally, were anything to happen like that on campus. And additionally, look, at the end of the day, you all allow us and you help us create amazing environments. And when we talk about safe, equitable and inclusive schools, they're engaging and they're full of student based relevant touchpoints, right? So that includes things that we've already mentioned before, like FAFSA workshops, college visits, career talks. But it's ultimately a caring staff that connect with students and their needs beyond curriculum that have been essential to getting us to safe, equitable and inclusive schools. Thank you for allowing us to do that.
Questions on goal three?
I want to make one comment on safe schools. This is anecdotal from a new high school or a couple, I don't know, maybe a year or two back in response to some high school violence that they had seen on the media. And the comment was, that doesn't happen. Our schools are super safe. Nothing ever happens at our schools because that doesn't happen and we are always safe and nobody puts us in a trash can and nobody ever gets beat up. And, you know, they said like nothing interesting ever happens. But I guess I really took that to heart that they, they feel safe. They feel more safe than their other peers out in the county. They go out on sports teams. They talk about the, you know, the, the types of things that are happening in other high school campuses and they really feel protected and safe on ours. So thank you guys for your work. This is a very important area.
Thank you. We have goal for sustainability.
And I will take that. And I'll just start by saying, really appreciate being in a district and in a community that prioritizes sustainability. It's something that's near and dear to my heart. And I know our board as well has prioritized this and especially our superintendent with all the support we've received. It makes work really fun. That said, this presentation on sustainability on goal for tonight is intentionally short because we're going to bring you a more robust report in July. So I'm going to stick to some high level points. But again, I just want to thank you and Dr. Gloria. This really makes work fun. This is something that's really important and I appreciate all the support. So beginning with some of the highlights, you can see that we break out our sustainability goals kind of based off the pillars that we submitted the green ribbon application for. So you have the three goals defined up there. And what I'll say without reading each one of those bullets is what's really nice about this is it integrates the operational improvements with the instructional strategies and concepts that are essential. When you talk about sustainable actions and education for our students. This is really important because that's what all the work that we've done and thanks to your support and providing us an opportunity to create a position for an environmental coordinator, adding sustainability to the director of facilities job description. These are crucial steps that are not common in most districts. And without that, we would not be getting the accolades and the green ribbon awards that we're getting today and that we should be getting in the foreseeable future as well. So next slide, as we look ahead, you know, some of the big things that we have and you can expect in the very near future, by the end of this week, as a matter of fact, is we have our big comprehensive energy master plan. We will have that completed through our partners at P2S. That is something that will be updated within our facilities master plan next year. So another big step as far as our operational improvements that we have for sustainability. And then also at the July meeting, we're going to have a presentation on all the great work that our instructional team with Dr. Mayberry and Gloria Hartwood has done as far as integrating the sustainability concepts with all of our green teams and the instructional components with not only what we've been able to accomplish this year, but looking for what we're going to be doing next year. Cause these are things that as, as we've, we've completed this year together, we found that not only have we had built a lot of strong momentum and I want to thank our students especially for engaging with us in this process. But it's really started to be a catalyst for forming, I think, what our real end goal is, which is that carbon neutrality by 2030. Lofty goal, very lofty goal, but we are committed to making the steps and figuring out how we can make that happen. And I really appreciate the opportunity to be part of that work because this is, this is exciting, but it's also, it's challenging. And that's what we want to come to work for is succeeding in these challenges. Thank you.
Questions on this? Look forward to that master plan.
But it's
So am I.
Yeah, it is, it is a lofty goal, but I think, as you said, it's a challenge and I think we'll become an example. Because it's, thank you.
So as we wrap up, thank you all witness tonight, what an amazing team we have at our school sites. This is the longest report that we give, and I give in a year, but I can't do without the team. And I think that it's truly a testament to just really the, the vision that you all have and that you allow us to kind of work on behalf of our students. The collective commitments that we've set here, I think we're definitely on display every student, every day. Continuous improvement and, and really the relationships and getting there with all of our students and our staff and our families. So with that, my deepest gratitude to the team over there. Great work. Thank you, Megan, for all the work that you did. It's been Megan's last board meeting. So we're really appreciative of all the work that you did this year and, and the, and last year as well at top of the world. But again, a great appreciation to, to the school board for, for allowing us just these great opportunities to take on sustainability and, and do it with the support that's not found in most other places where it's usually here. Do this on top of everything else that you do every day. So you really have put us in a great position to be successful. So thank you.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I just want to say thanks for a great year, end of year report. I ask a lot of questions and, you know, that's just what I do. But it's really fun because then I hear these reports and a lot of the stuff we talk about during the year ends up in the report. And I just think it's great that you're so responsive and really just getting so much done. So it was really impressive. Thank you.
I just think it's really evident that everything that we do here is centered on the students. That comes across clearly in all the different methods that are used at the different levels. I think our students are very, very fortunate to be in our schools and they will reap the benefits of that, of the individual care that they get. I agree that we have a great team. We have a great team on all administrative levels and it shows. But again, and I've said this before, I think that some of the, when we, when you generate questions with your reports, a lot of it to me is generated because the data that you present is so authentic. And so if the numbers are down or the numbers aren't quite as, didn't reach the goal that you hope for, we, that isn't hidden from us. And so that of course then stimulates questions, but I think there's a real value in that integrity. So it's appreciated. Thank you.
I would like to compliment our one employee, the superintendent. You don't have a team like this. It doesn't fall out of the sky. It's something that's developed and it takes time and it's leadership that makes them come together. And thank you.
Well, now we have executive cabinet member reports, Mr. Dixon. Okay.
I'll be brief. I'm just really looking forward to graduation and promotions this Thursday. And I just want to do a quick shout out to our theater manager in the back there, Dez. You've made the graduation planning so amazing these past couple of years. Thank you so much.
I'm lost on where people are, Mr. Conlin.
Thank you, President Vickers and board members. I'll keep my report brief as well. We definitely enjoyed celebrating our staff and students at our June 6 recognition event. It was a, it's always a magical event and great to see so many folks recognized. My department is busy completing their recruitment and interview process for the various open positions for the 2425 school year. Most notably, the top of the world principal position with screening and panel interviews scheduled for this week. And the district office is also feverishly preparing for the annual end of year barbecue. It's happening this Friday, which is always an exciting way to bring the school year to a close by celebrating our amazing staff one last time before most of them head off for the summer. So it's all for time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. Not much more to say. They, you know, lots of open houses and musical performances going on here. We're finishing up our end of the year assessments with the cast and I ready. Our team is prepping for summer school, which is full, where we've also filling, pretty much filling, filled up preschool and TK as well. So a lot of work is being done in those areas. We had our, it's a colloquium to celebrate our new, our new teachers, first and second year teachers as well recently. So a lot of exciting things going on here as we wrap up the end of the year.
Thank you. Information items instructional services, LCFF local indicators reporters, a public comment on this item?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Wow. I have a really tough act to follow tonight. And I just wanted to take a moment to also express my gratitude to this phenomenal leadership team. And a lot of the successes that we review through our state and local indicators are attributed to their efforts and exceptional dedication to their students. Thank you for allowing me to join you this evening to share a brief overview of our Laguna Beach Unified Local Indicators. When we were last together, our team presented a comprehensive summary of all state and local indicators that inform the development of our local control accountability plan, also known as LCAP. However, the California Department of Education requires districts that receive public funding to address local indicators, which are priority areas not collected through the state level data such as test scores, suspension data, absentee data, et cetera, through a separate meeting to align with the adoption of the LCAP. So tonight we will provide you with a short recap of key points related to this information. Both state and local indicators form the basis for the local control funding formula priority areas and must be addressed through the LCAP, which you heard through our last session together. As shared during our presentation of the LCAP draft, LBUSD has interwoven state and local indicators as key success metrics throughout our three goal areas, meaning that we analyze both state student performance outcomes as well as perceptions collected via our annual community survey data to determine goal baselines and progress. The local indicators that we will review tonight include basic services and conditions, implementation of state academic standards, parent and family engagement, school climate and access to a broad course of study. We are pleased to report to you tonight that LBUSD has met all local indicator areas for the current school year, which will be reflected on our 2024 California school dashboard, which will be published in the fall. As you can see from our 2023 dashboard, the local indicator status is reported along with the state level data. LBUSD will continue to show standard met in all of the indicator boxes you see there in 2024. As is the case with all state priority areas, the local indicator should also continue to take into consideration students from significant groups and from historically marginalized populations, including students who are English learners and students from economically disadvantaged homes. Throughout our LCAP, we address special programs, services and supports for all of our significant student groups shown here. Basic conditions addresses school conditions and LBUSD continues to have zero findings related to school facilities, access to instructional materials or teacher miss assignments. So we have met this indicator area. The implementation of state academic standards addresses full implementation of almost all standards in our district with the exception being mathematics, as the state has just introduced a new mathematics framework. Next year, LBUSD will devote considerable time and resources to ensuring that our instructional teams have access to high quality professional development in the new framework. And additionally, we look forward to maintaining highly favorable, certificated and classified development or staff perceptions related to the professional development options offered across a multitude of different areas throughout the year. LBUSD continues to prioritize our next indicator area, family engagement, as essential to collaborative partnerships and student success as discussed throughout our LCAP presentation. Ongoing communication and opportunities for parental involvement and input are at the heart of our work. These are just a few examples of ways in which LBUSD staff engage with families and we continue to receive favorable responses in related areas via our annual community survey. The California Department of Education requires publicly funded school districts to collect feedback from parents, students and staff related to school climate on an annual basis. Our community survey provides invaluable insights in this area and helps to inform our LCAP goals and our success criteria. You will recognize many of the data points that you see here as key metrics within our three year plan. In addition to perception data, attendance, suspension and expulsion rates also reported within the California school dashboard round out essential areas to consider when evaluating school climate. The final local indicator area, access to a broad course of study, ensures that districts offer a well-rounded educational program to students through the integration of the arts, science, world languages, career and technical education and honors and advanced placement course options. LBUSD continues to offer a number of these options across these areas and many more, ensuring students across all grade levels enhance their educational experiences through a comprehensive, multifaceted program. In closing, we are grateful to the governing board for your continued support of LBUSD programs, services and supports in addition to world-class school facilities, small class sizes and high interest courses that enable our students to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Board members?
Just a quick one.
Sure.
On the progress in implementing standards aligned instructional material and practices and providing professional learning. So how were these scores arrived at? I mean, does this mean that, for instance, in mathematics that got a three that, is it on a five point scale that we are only implementing about half of the standards or what does that mean?
Not at all. You're correct in that it is a five point scale and it is a self-reflection. So the reason that mathematics is a three as opposed to five is because the state has just introduced brand new mathematics frameworks. So there are new standards and approaches and ideologies and strategies, techniques that inform instruction that we all need to learn that is new and different. And so we are resetting our reflection in that sense until we become fully proficient in integrating the new frameworks. And a lot of time next year will be devoted to diving deeply into the frameworks, having professional coaching from OCD and other experts coming in to work with groups of teachers, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom.
That makes sense. I know about the new standards being implemented and that makes total sense.
So we will move along that trajectory as we come, become more competent and proficient in the adopting the new mathematics frameworks and all of the various components that come with that.
I'm always interested in the statistics that are so small. I was trying to figure out expulsion rate point oh eight. Am I right that that it's like 1.9 students?
For which one? I'm sorry.
Expulsion rate.
Yes, yes.
My, my basic math still works and 2.4%, I haven't figured that one out yet. But it's always helpful. Yeah. It's always helpful for me to, to know what the numbers are when these small things. But I think that's, that's incredible that we've done such a good job as far as with that 1.9% of, 1.9 students that we've thrown out.
Absolutely. Our suspension rate has historically remained within between two and three percent. And our expulsion rate is always very low between, you know, one to two students per year, if any.
And in a lot of school districts, the easiest way to get rid of a problem is to expel. And so congratulations to you all.
Any other questions? If not, thank you. Dr. Hamburg. We have a number of action items in our business services section, our first AA approval of the 2024, 2025 local control and accountability plan, the LCAP. Is there a public comment on this?
I see none.
Thank you.
Just a brief reminder, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Mayberry, but we present you to you tonight, the LCAP prior to the budget in that order for a specific reason. And up to this point, neither, we haven't received any questions or feedback since we reported on it on May 23rd.
Thank you, Dr. Mayberry.
Yeah, thank you. So this is the 2425 local control accountability plan. It's part of a three It's part of a three-year plan that's implemented from July 2024 to June 2027. It includes not just the plan, but also the budget overview for parents and annual update, which we've shared with the board previously. On or before July 1st of each year, school districts are required to adopt the LCAP using the state-adopted template, which is linked to this board item. A draft of the plan was brought to the board at the last board meeting, which had a public hearing on May 23rd to gather additional input from parents, staff, students, community members. At the hearing, there was an opportunity to respond to questions and comments about the plan. We also have a link on our website to collect information. Since that hearing, we have not received any additional recommendations or comments regarding the actions, expenditures, and the LCAP since the public hearing. So staff is recommending approval of the 2425 Local Control and Accountability Plan.
Thank you. If there are no further questions from board members, I'd ask for a motion for approval, please. Any discussion? See, I did a very thorough job in the presentation, so thank you. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Thank you. Next, we have 8B, Approval of the 2024-2025 All Funds Final Budget. Do we have public comment on this?
Yes, I have one speaker card. I'd like to call Mrs. Jane Leary. Forward to the microphone. Mrs. There, you have three minutes. Do we need to do the timer, Mrs. Weber? Just give us one minute.
I wish I was a little bit taller.
You can move this.
I should have worn the height. Oh, there we go. There it goes. Okay.
And just say, give Mrs. Weber a minute to get the timer up.
Okay, ready? Okay. So first, I want to say that last night, my husband and I attended the Laguna Tunes program at the high school, and he commented, he took, looked through the windows. He looked through the quad because he hadn't really walked through the area before, and he saw the Pride Week poster. And he just thought, wow, you wouldn't find that happening in a whole lot of schools in the country or even in Southern California. So they had this by the day. There were some activities each day, and he was really moved by that. So when you talk about including students and making students go part of it, I think that's just one example that we saw last night that we both felt really good about. So the reason I'm here is I wanted to speak about about the Prop 28 funds, and we are a kind of a city built on the arts. And as I was sitting, listening to all of the reports, which you have to say are very impressive. I don't have any kids. I don't have kids in the district. Well, we have a lot of neighbor kids, and I know them all and see them all, and it's good to know that there's so many wonderful things that are happening in the schools. It really makes me feel good. So as a community member, I care about the kids. But when I'm sitting there and I'm looking, I'm looking at the logo for the school district, and I see, oh, there's an art, a paintbrush. I thought, that's good, because it connects us to our heritage, I'll call it. So I reached out to Dr. Valoria and questioned like, okay, so I understand there's like money coming to the schools, and how are we going to be using those here in Laguna? And you got back to me so quickly, which I really appreciate. And it was that, you know, there's $300,000 for all four schools. So it's not really a significant amount of money, and I get that. If you got to, you know, I don't know, what does it cost to have a staff member, a hundred grand with, you know, all the benefits and all that, maybe more. But so I was thinking, maybe there are way, and you also mentioned that the principals are all looking at what students want. So the focus is on singers, dancing, acting, music programs, but I didn't see anything in there of other forms of artistic expression. And so I thought, well, gosh, that seems like something that a lot of students would want, that would be a benefit. Also, we've got LCAD, the Festival of Arts, Sawdust Artists, the Art Museum. We have so many resources here that you could draw from and have programs that aren't necessarily full-time one teacher who teaches art. So I just wanted to suggest maybe some things could be done a little more creatively with your $300,000 that you're getting. So I think that kind of captured what I wanted to say. It's just that, think about all the students, and some might not be singers and dancers. Some might like to be more creative with their hands, and I think that's important to their emotional health. And I have five seconds left, so I will say thank you all very much, and I appreciate all the efforts and hard work you put in.
Thank you, Mrs. Leary. President Vickers, I don't have any other cards.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, we presented this as an information item at the May 23rd meeting. I would just like to remind the board that it is a budget that's presented. It demonstrates a strong financial position, even with the slowing in the projected growth of revenues and the definition of a strong financial position being specific to maintaining healthy reserve balances and meeting all of our current and future anticipated expenditures. So when I say strong financial position, that's what I'm referring to. And then we know also that the budget is a living document that evolves throughout the course of the year. Of course, there is the first and second interim reports that provide more comprehensive changes as the information changes as the year goes on. But also, in the monthly financial reports, you're able to see each month where our revenues and expenditures are lining up with our projections. So with that, happy to take any questions. Otherwise, I would present this budget for your approval tonight as a positive certification.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Dixon? That's very positive. May I have a motion, please? Any discussion? Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Thank you. 8C, Approval of Agreement with Spelman Performances LLC to Provide Speed Training Related Services for an amount not to exceed $14,000. Do we have a public comment?
I see none.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Vickers. This is a contract that I worked with our athletic administrator, Denise Selby, Dr. Selby, to craft for speed training services for our football team at the high school. The $14,000 amount was a donation designated from School Power, so there is no impact to our general fund. And if approved, the services would begin now relatively soon and go through the end of December, providing roughly two speed training sessions per month.
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead.
Do you have a question, Mary? No. And Mr. Dixon, did Dr. Selby talk about whether this was discussed for any other sports teams? I know there's a large number of students on the football team, but speed training seems applicable to many sports, soccer, basketball, track, just as an example. So if you could comment on that.
Yeah, no, this was specific for the football team, and I think that was tied to the intent of the donation that it came from. But certainly, there are other opportunities, and I'm sure that we could look at it with Dr. Selby.
Any other questions? Okay, then a motion, please. Any discussion?
I just want to make a comment back to Dr. Selby when we have donations like this through School Power that are designated, that we think about broadly about athletic speed being more broad than one team. I love seeing it, and I love seeing donations from School Power as well. But I do want the message to be loud and clear that speed training should apply to all sports, of which speed is important, too. And I know there's some background on this particular donation, and I'm really excited to see what this does for our football athletes. And I'd love to maybe have a report in a couple months, how that's going, and if there would be any interest in additional services that are a little more broadly based. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Student vote?
In favor.
Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. 8D, Approval of Resolution Number 24-05, Education Protection Account, EPA.
Yes, so this is our annual resolution that's required. Initially, it came out of the passage of Proposition 30 in 2012 that was set to expire in 2018. That provides our district roughly a little less than $500,000 a year. It's specific for classroom expenditures, so it has to be spent on classroom instruction. It was extended via Proposition 55 in 2016, and that goes through, provides this funding through 2030. And until that time is up, we will bring this resolution annually for your review and approval.
I don't believe I asked if there was public comment.
I see no public comment, President Vickers.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion, please? Any discussion? We got a nice extension on this. So roll call?
Chase. Clerk Osborne? Yes. Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Monteski?
Yes.
President Vickers?
Yes. We move to 8E, Resolution Number 24-06, Authorization for Signatures and Authority as required by Orange County Department of Education. Public comment on 8E?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
This is just a slight change to our authorization of district signers. It adds Dr. Mayberry to our list. Currently, it is Dr. Valoria, myself, and Mr. Conlon that have been authorized with the OCDE form, and this just simply adds Dr. Mayberry to that list.
Thank you. Board questions? Motion? Thank you. Any discussion? A roll call, please? That's okay.
Chase. Clerk Osborne? Yes. Member Perry? Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Monteski?
Yeah.
President Vickers?
Yes. Move to Human Resources Action Items. 9A, Approval of the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for the 2024-25 School Year. Public comment?
None.
Thank you. Mr. Conlon?
Thank you, President Vickers. So as you know, this is an annual requirement that we bring to the board, the Declaration of Need, in areas where we anticipate the possibility of having a staff member in a position without the valid credential. So for this year, we just have one special education position that we have listed as a possible, knowing we have a number of leaves in that area. Again, typically, it's extremely rare that we have a scenario where we have to use this. But again, it's just precautionary that we do it in the summer and prior to the school year, so it's here for your approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion? Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Conlon, are we seeing a reduction in the number of teacher shortages? Because I know in years past, we've had, sometimes we'll have a science teacher, we'll have other precautionary measures and other subjects, but are we starting to get a stronger pool of candidates?
Yeah, definitely seeing that, as well as our subpool is much more robust than it had been in previous years. So we're starting to rebound quite a bit, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Why do you think there's, we may possibly be out of compliance in this special ed position?
It's just that with the number of anticipated leaves of absences that we're having for this upcoming year for special education. Again, we were, this past year, we were able to define highly qualified individuals, but it's a situation where you just kind of, you identify a scenario where you may have this need, so and we'd like to preemptively have the authorization in place as a backup plan. It's more so maybe if it goes, you know, the leave beyond the 30 days. Right now, it's 20 days for an individual to be in a special education class with the proper credential. So just as a, out of abundance of caution, but we do everything in our power to not have to use this. It's just precautionary.
May I have a motion, please? Thank you. Any discussion? Student vote? Board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carrie's 5-0. Move to Instructional Services. 10A, Approval of Proposition 28 Annual Expenditures for the 2023-24 School Year. Is there a public comment on this item?
Did you want to come up, Mrs. Larry, and make another comment? Okay, yeah, you had 8B. Okay, no problem. No speakers, President Vickers.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Presentation. Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you. Per ed code 8820, the board is required to annually approve Proposition 28 Annual Report. The mandated information in the report for this board item includes the number of full-time equivalent teachers, classified personnel and teaching aides, number of pupils served, and the number of school sites providing arts educational programs with the Prop 28 funds. Staff submit this report electronically to the California Department of Ed by June 30th of each year going forward, and will be posted on the district's website. District staff must submit an annual expenditure report to the state by October 1st of each year, so that'll be in the fall. Again, this is new this year, but this school year, those numbers are zero due to all the factors that were shared with the board previously in the weekly update. It's also in the background of this item, which is more common than not for this school districts. Principals and staff have been collecting input for the last year from students, teachers, parents throughout the year. They have some planned expenditures for next year. But again, for this item, the board is just approving the annual report regarding the number of staff, students served, and school sites with arts programs funded for the Prop 28 funds, which is zero for this year.
Question? So we'll be getting another report before October about how we actually plan to spend the funds?
The requirement for the board is only to approve this one report here. So we're happy to provide an update in the fall on how they're expended, but that's not a requirement of the actual.
Okay. As you know, I'm on a lot of those committees, and I would like a report on our art standards and which ones we're doing a great job meeting and which ones we need to meet. And I don't mean today.
Is that different? Because we did the one earlier this year. Is there something different?
I think that request would come in another category and not just, that's what you're asking for is broader than just the Proposition 28 additional funds.
Also, as part of Prop 28, at least in the, in the, in services I went to, I looked at the survey, and thank you for sending the survey, but they said, kind of agreed that it should be much more detailed, that it should have specifics that specific schools are looking at, depending on those schools, not just, you know, parent. And I know only 50 people answered, but do you think your school needs more music? It would, they, for instance, like in Los Angeles, they, their poet laureate from 2023, Salomi Agaraji, I think that's how you say her name. She really ignited Los Angeles, and they have so many, with word ignite and get lit, all these students are doing so much better in language arts now because they have this way to express themselves, and they're learning about literature. And I think about, like Almoro specifically, with Dr. Hatchell talking about the little boy and ballet and the dance and Heritage Day. And our Orange Coast College has a whole dance program on world dance. I mean, they do African dance and drumming. They do specific Jewish dances. They do, you know, dances from Eastern Europe, Polynesian, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm looking for more specifics, not just, you know, we have some money we might spend it. I think, I think parents and if students are involved, they need some choices about what they can do. And I'm actually disappointed we didn't do anything with the money this year. So I'm, I'm very concerned about doing something with it next year and something that's needed.
Again, this is just, we're just doing an expenditure for this year, and this is in the board item. In the last seven or eight years, we spent 1.6 or 7 million on arts staffing. That's now almost double that. So there's a lot of visual performing arts stuff going on at our schools. Obviously, a lot more for spending a few million more over just seven years. So this amount is something that we want to expand in a very thoughtful way that we received a couple months ago. So, but again, with the expenditures, that's by ed code, that's the principals that make those decisions after they collect their input, which they have been doing. And I'm happy to give another update. We had, in the, two months ago, we had our staff come in and present on visual performing arts through the standards, right? So we had it by the five different domains and all the different things we were doing. We talked about some areas of growth. So, as you're describing, so we have that as well. But again, tonight is just to approve, just to approve this annual report.
I, I also have, go ahead, and I'll ask the rest.
Not in discussion, that was to be Member Perry's question, and I attempted to redirect her. Heart of her context, it belongs in another place. It does not belong on this annual report.
Okay, so.
What she's asking for.
Dr. Kelly, do you have a question? Because I don't want us to get into discussion.
Yeah. You have a question?
I just wondered how the allocations were divided of this money. It just seemed, is it by headcount? And what's the district office doing with a hundred and eleven dollars?
They're planning. This is a planning stage.
It's how these students were reported. So, the, the district office is actually assigned school site for a speech support school, and that's mostly our preschool students, but there was one kindergarten-age student, so that hundred and eleven dollars was because of that student. So, next year, that will change. That'll be moved to top of the world.
And it's a, it's a per pupil allocation that's set in the statute. So, each student is allocated a certain amount per student. So, the money will decline going into next year as well, because we'll be reducing again in population, so. No, it's based on student population, yeah.
You have a question, Kelly?
Can I move approval of the items so we could go into discussion?
That's the last question. It's Kelly.
Um. So, discussion on this, this, as I understand it, is just for this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, money's received late in the year, and an annual plan that the state is requiring is to post, saying that we're not expending these dollars next year. We roll them forward, right? We don't lose the money, we don't send it back, it's not a use it or use it. We roll it forward, and I really like that because it gives us more thoughtful time to look at what we haven't already met. The board has made a considerable investment in the arts since I've been on this board with two full-time visual and performing arts TOSSAs. I think staff just mentioned that we've, we've expended more than additional two million dollars on an ongoing basis in, in the visual and performing arts area. So, with this last three hundred, or by next year, potentially six hundred thousand, I'm in full support of seeing what our, our leadership team, our principals and the sites come up with that's still unmet. Because I, I think that the intent of Prop twenty-eight, to have sites drive, school sites drive unmet needs, is, is interesting and unique, and it's not the board, and it's not the executive cabinet putting forward new positions or new contracts with outside people at school sites, saying what little needs might not be met. And in a, in a district that's committing this large amount to the arts, I really want to make sure that we're, one, following state law, right? Where we have this eighty, twenty percent rule on what can be spent, but that we're doing it in a way that is meeting unmet needs. So, I support the, the plan as it's put forward, and I look forward to seeing it this time again next year.
I'm gonna ask Scott to really, because you made a really important point. I think Scott can kind of elaborate on something he's been working on.
Well, yeah, I am the Art Department Chair at Laguna Beach High School, so it has been something that we've been working on and discussing at the high school with all the art teachers. In fact, we're meeting with LCAD tomorrow, or on, on Wednesday as well, to try to bring them into, with mentors and different things to be part of our program as well. But we're really looking at opening up our art rooms and stuff, not only to the high school students that aren't in the classes, but they can come down and work in them, but also to the junior high students and bringing the community in as well. So, we really want to kind of have a voice and choice and have as many students as possible be impacted by this, where it's just not in periods and classes, but opening up to things that we don't currently do, bringing in community members, bringing in businesses and, and stuff to work with our students directly. So, we do have a vision kind of that we've been working on and presenting, so it's, I think it's going to be exciting.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you noted that, I mean, there, we're allowed three years to expend the funds. So, putting a lot of thought into the planning and with the four principals, I think is, is a solid way to go.
I love that too, Mr. Whitkop. One of the things that they recommended at the state, and I don't know if Mr. Conlon has this in place or not, but because the funds may decrease the next year and the next year, and I know we talked about being a little leery of hiring staff, because we don't want to fire staff, but to hire guest teachers, but through classified, and they can have, people I talked to at the state said, you can hire somebody, like, say you want somebody to do animation and pay them, because they really want people to be paid that are artists, and they want students to know that are going into the arts that they can make money. So, pay somebody for two weeks or whatever amount of time it is to come in, but it goes through the stu-, school district as a classified employee, and then it can be part of the eighty percent of the money that is spent.
Yeah, just, it's not, yeah. It's professional experts by ed code are not classified as classified staff for the statute. So, that, that is something we were considering trying to do, professional experts. Bringing on a classified employee, which the intent of the language is that they are both either classified or certificated by definition and ed code, would make them a CSCA member, which means that we would have to go through the six-ten process to create those positions, and they would need to fall on a salary schedule. So, the, there is not a lot of flexibility from the professional expert side. We've been looking and trying to determine that. There's a lack of clarity on the part of CDE specific to that as well. However, the statute actually called out specifically in the FAQ section that a professional expert by definition is not a classified employee. And so, that is causing a, a, a challenge for us. So, it's a challenge for all school districts, because that was a route people would wish to go to spend, expend their eighty percent. So, again, you know, the, we're trying to figure out, it's a small amount of money that will be declining for, for a hundred percent certain, because one, Prop ninety-eight's being readjusted next year, and at the same time, we're declining enrollment. So, to, I think, Member Osborne's point, having a little extra cushion here as we kind of move in the next couple of years is going to be extremely important, because we're not going to be able to commit to long-term funds. And as we know, you know, a, a certificate of staff members' costs is upwards of potentially a hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you include a benefits package. We only have, you know, three hundred grand. So, yeah, we're trying to be mindful of that. Twenty percent of it can be spent on, on professional experts in that way, and so that's something that we're definitely considering, and that's what Scott was mentioning with the work that he's doing, so.
Sorry. I just want to make two other, two other points. One, for administrative leaders to consider is the arts programming that's being offered at no cost to our community through the Summer Lead Program. The board did, after much debate, decide to fund that on an ongoing basis, at least for now, out of the general fund. So, we could also recover general fund dollars if those expenses, many of our lead classes are arts-focused, was being paid through these funds, so that's something for staff to explore and look at really closely. And sometimes these are questions that have to go up to the state level or to other superintendents or to our legal expertise, but that would put money back in our general fund. So, that's an area to explore. And then, secondly, you know, even at the high school, if you look at what students are interested in, we talk to high schoolers, ceramics is waitlisted, multimedia is waitlisted. So, what are we doing? We have kids that want to take arts classes. They're our most popular ones. How do we just get more periods of those? Just get some more kids making pots if that's what everybody wants to take? So, those are my comments. I'm not saying I'm a master scheduler, but the students clearly don't want to be waitlisted on a class.
Well, that's kind of, that's kind of the idea that we're putting forward, because these classes are our class, our ceramics class, my classes, is that we have it open up until like four-thirty, five o'clock as a makerspace lab where they can come in. We have professionals there, we have teachers there, and it's kind of a voice and choice. They kind of learn what they want to learn, you know, versus the traditional class kind of thing. So, you can have clubs coming in, ASP coming in, all these different people coming in as groups and just creating art in a makerspace, you know, for the love of it. And it also gives another safe space for students to come when they don't have a sporting event until six o'clock, and they're just wandering around campus. It gives them caring staff, people, and like, once again, a space where they just can create and be artful. And that's one of the ideas that we have.
I really appreciate that you are, Dr. Valoria, exploring all these areas. And I know, I spoke with people at the state that said they were very willing to work with districts to be able to hire specialists and guest teachers.
Could any of this money be pulled back if there's a budget crisis?
The only way, it won't be pulled back, it will just be reduced, and that's what's happening to us going into the next several years, because Prop ninety-eight's being rebenched down by a significant amount, billions. So, what was a billion dollars originally, if that was going to go towards a statewide, will be significantly less going next year.
Remember, cut the arts first.
They won't be able to cut the program, they won't be able to cut it, but they'll be able to, to do, you know, do their part, so, yeah. And we're getting, we're having a lot of challenges with CDE. The template that we have before you tonight, CDE refused to provide an expenditure plan. So, we created our own example. So, thank you, Raymond, for creating an expenditure plan.
Any other, any other discussion?
I, I also wanted to respond, it is supposed to come from a school and families, but in some districts, the board has been very, very involved with the schools and the families. We have chosen, I guess, not to be, but the board has really, it's fine, the board can take the lead because principals, et cetera, have a lot of other things on their plate and may not know all the things available in communities. And I was also told to be very careful about voting for this if I didn't have details.
Dr. Mayberry, I know you stated it once before. Do you, can you repeat part of what you said about the planning? In response to, in response to Member Perry's comment?
Oh, sorry. Say that again? I didn't hear you.
Can you repeat what you were just saying? No, you can't. That's Valoria.
I'll do it. Over the last year plus, our principals have engaged their teaching staff. When we first knew about the, the funding, which was over shortly after the passage of the proposition, have been soliciting feedback from students, whether it's Mr. Whitkop doing that in his classrooms with, or whether it's the principals having straight discussions with the students in their classrooms or doing it during PLCs or during PTA meetings or doing a survey. We've done a substantial amount of outreach. I feel as though the principals are in a great position to determine what the needs are related to their student body and their arts programs, using the experts that we have. And as Member Osborne points out, we have added art support at the elementary schools. The survey that we gave to our families, though, with fifty respondents, reaffirmed that we were already on the right track and adding what we needed to add in support of our arts programs. So, I think, I, I feel as though our staff has done a fantastic job. And the, the part that's, I think, really important is none of the things that we're putting into place for the most part, especially at the high school and middle school level, are going to be commitments that we have to say, if we don't like it, we can go back to the drawing board and try something different. And that's really the impetus of the, getting the students' feedback around what do they want to see, which is relevant, real-life art experiences that allow them to cross multiple modalities, which means working with Mr. Whitkop in his room, on a digital art side, a pencil and paper side and a ceramic side, while at the same time increasing our opportunities for students to learn dance. And so, we have engaged in that work as well. So, it's a multifaceted approach, but I believe the, the four folks at the end of the table there have definitely been put into a position where they feel confident that the recommendations in the, in the areas of focus that we have are, are coming from their expertise, which I trust.
Thank you also, sorry, Dr. Mayberry, what I was referring to was that, on the second page of the backup, is the board requirement for Prop twenty-eight is to approve the annual report, and that's what we've received tonight, and it addresses these areas of the full-time equivalence and the, the number of students and the allocations. And since we're in the planning stage, we have, you know, we don't have those numbers. We have the zeros, because that's where we are at the point.
Yes.
So, that's, that's the clarification I was.
We expect those to not be zero next year, but there's zero now.
We are doing, but what is required, and, thank you.
So, we're agreeing that it was right to not spend any money?
Not without planning.
And the agreement isn't, the, all you're agreeing is that we did not expend the money. Correct. Every year at this time, you'll be given an expenditure plan, which is what we're required to provide to the state. It will not be your agreement of how we spent the funds. It is simply you're agreeing that this is the report that we're sending up to the state to state that's, this is how we spent the funds.
Yes. Call for the vote, student vote?
In favor.
Okay. Board members on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose carries five oh. Thank you. We have ten B, approval of proposal with Orange County Department of Education, OCDE, to provide professional development, training and support in mathematics for elementary teachers and administrators in an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand. Dr. Mayberry, a public comment on this item?
None.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry?
Thank you. Our Strategic Services staff recommends partnering with the Orange County Department of Ed for providing professional learning, cognitive guided instruction, the new Math California Frameworks, which we talked about a little bit earlier tonight, as well as any new curricular programs. During the last four years, our elementary teachers have worked often with Orange County Department of Ed. They're regularly requested, receive really good reviews from our staff. Additionally, our current math curriculum, math expressions, was adopted nine years ago, actually. So, there's definitely itching to look for other resources. So, this year, we had a small pilot group of elementary staff do some of this training with Orange County Department of Ed and the teacher leadership program. We kind of walked away with three goals for next year. Under, one, understanding the new framework and any pedagogies. Two, developing a common vision for the math learning experience for Laguna Beach Elementary students. And three, aligning any current resources, as well as exploring any new ones. So, with that, we're recommending this expanded partnership with Orange County Department of Ed that will be applied to all elementary teachers, including instructional aides or any intervention staff on the new frameworks and help us kind of align this common vision and, and our resources.
Any questions? Have a motion then? Discussion? We have discussion on this item?
This is actually a question, President Vickers, for staff. This is K, K five? And do we have any plans? Is, there's a state framework that's, that was adopted that Dr. Kanberg mentioned, we're in the, the level three, because it's initial implementation. The state framework changed K through twelve, or is they only changed K through five?
Yeah, it is K through, K through twelve. The folk, the, you know, with, with any type of goals or fo-, you know, focus, we try to keep it narrow, and so that we're, we're, we're moving forward in one area and not spread across. So, at the secondary level, their focus has been very much the last year or two around intervention and getting really tight around the math intervention, the I-ready, everything connected to that. So, we have not gone as far along at the secondary level as we have at elementary, which had a more built-out MTSS. However, one part of the new frameworks is the data science course that the high school is doing. So, that is one piece that we were able to move forward with at the high school level. But we would expect at the middle and high school to have more additional professional learning in some form next year, with the following year, a lot more.
Thank you for that answer.
Any other questions? Oh, that, I'm sorry, we already had the motion, so that's, I guess I skipped your question. So, the, any other discussion? Student vote?
In favor.
Board members on favor?
Aye.
Oppose carries five oh.
I'd like to request that we let the four principals go. It's a very busy week.
It is a very busy week. Thank you.
Promotion, so if you guys want to head on out, I think it would probably, you need a good night's sleep for the rest of this week, so. Thank you. And no board members, you don't get to leave yet.
That counts. So, we move to Section eleven, Action Item Superintendent, eleven A, approval of request to change the, to change the date of the November meeting from November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, to November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Do we have public comment on this?
None.
Thank you. Dr. Valoria?
So, we have a conflict. Obviously, we know when we approve these meetings in December, that conflicts do arise at times. This is one that I'm hopeful the board will consider. November fourteenth happens to conflict with the AXA conference, and at that conference, we will be honoring Ms. Weber and Dr. Hatchell at their final conference of the year for AXA. And if we are not able to make this move, we will definitely be without Ms. Weber, and I think she would be very upset with me if I did not attend, and I'd be upset with myself. So, I'm hopeful that the board will consider allowing us to move this moving, meeting from the fourteen to the twenty-first.
Any questions? This is the first, this is the statewide recognition?
Yes, this is.
This is the first time that the state has recognized it all the way out?
So, this is the one time they do. So, we do a local recognition at the county level, which was, we had that event in May, and then they do all the statewide winners, which we have two here, and actually, three, I think, in our, in our region, but two of which are Laguna Beach, will be honored there at the annual convention down in San Diego.
Any other questions? We have a motion? We have a motion? Thank you, any discussion?
I think it's important that if you go and Victoria is honored and Julie and people are there. I did get comments from community, not about this, they don't even know about this, but like about the meeting tonight and kind of expecting more of a regular schedule and not, you know, being thrown off by having a meeting on Monday. So just as much as we can, if we can stick to our regular schedule, I think that would make the community happy.
And I like this, this is a Thursday date, I'm looking at the calendar, so we're, we're staying on a Thursday here, so that's good.
Any other comments?
I have to change my birthday plans now, but I will.
Move approval? Thank you. I need further discussion. Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, Kerry's five oh, thank you. Okay, we move to consent calendar. Is there a public comment on the consent calendar?
None.
Thank you. Do board members wish to pull anything between items C and M? Then I'd ask for a motion, please, to approve consent calendar, items C through M.
Second.
Student vote?
In favor.
Thank you, board members all in favor? Aye. Opposed, Kerry's five oh, thank you. We move to Section thirteen, government, governance action. Do we have public comment on this section?
None.
Thank you, we have governance, planning, discussion.
I'll lead, yeah. So, so in trying to get some dates, so we have three different topics to tackle. And we're trying to determine when the board wants to do these, and if they want to do them in, all in August, if you want to break them into, do two at one meeting and one at another meeting. So the topics, I believe there was intention to revisit protocols and discuss some potential, potential next steps related to board protocols. There's also the need to hold the annual goal setting for myself, which is a closed session item. And then another board policy workshop. If we wait too long, we're going to have a lot more policies to tackle, so we try to keep those on a pretty regular rotation. So August four, sure, unless the board wishes to push the goal setting, which I would, I'm happy to do that contractually. I can flex that if that's something that we can't get a meeting for some reason in August. But it would be best if we can for sure get the goal setting and the policy workshop done in the same, during August. I'm, obviously, it's up to the board when they want to handle the, the next section around protocol. So we're just trying to land on some, some dates so that we can move forward with getting that planning going, so.
We had a date for policy, we need to change that because of the calendar, is that correct? Right, that's for a comeback breakfast day.
Right.
And then PD day, okay. Okay, we had, we're changing, we set up the policy workshop, and it was going to be August twenty, twentieth, which is the welcome back breakfast and a PD day, so we need to move that. And then, I mean, contractually, we're to do the goal setting by the end of August, is that?
Yeah, and that would be the goal, but we, we've done it in September because we simply couldn't get it in Au- in August. So again, if, if that needs to fly, so I like to start the school year honestly with them, with kind of the goals in place. So we would need to look at some dates, and in August, we do a board meeting on the fifteenth, which is our one August meeting. And then we, obviously, with school starting, we're kind of back into the mix of, of that. So the week of the nineteenth is more or less off limits, simply because it's, it's a very busy time. The week of the nineteenth is off limits for, for us, simply because it's the first week back with school. We have a lot of events, professional development. So if anything, it would be best the thirteenth, fourteenth, or sixteenth of August, or we can get into the first full week of school, if that's an interest of the board. It's a very busy time as well, so.
I think it'd be good if we could do it the week of the twelfth. So it's the availability. Yes.
So I think I skipped. Could do it that day if you wanted to go for a long one.
I wanted to make a, make a, can I make one suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we can cover, this is my, my opinion, one out of five opinions, because of the compacted nature of August. And I do agree with Dr. Roloya, I'd like to have his goals in place before we start the year. I think that's good planning, that's good governance. I think there's an interest to not have two additional meetings right before school starts, it's a very busy time. And I think we could kind of try, experiment with consolidating those into one retreat format, a longer session. So that's my preference, to find one date on the week that Dr. Roloya has just thrown out, the week of August. Uh, yes, the week of the twelfth. And aside from that day that we have the board meeting, which Dr. Kelly said there's, he doesn't have an interest in having that meeting on that same day, I'm available any of those days, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Friday.
So I don't want to be difficult. I am hardly traveling this summer, but we may go away in August. And I'm texting my significant other to find out if we have any plans, and I'm not getting a response right now. So I, I, we could pick a morning that week, but maybe we could have a backup like the week before, or the last week of July. I, I think I will be gone one week, or for a few days in August, I just don't know when. So why don't we pick two dates, one, the week of the twelfth, which, you know, could really work out, and then maybe one backup, like Tuesday morning, the thirtieth or something, or, I don't know, I'm just throwing out.
Tuesday, the thir- oh, you're back in July.
Yeah, I was just, well, I'm looking at the August calendar, and it shows the July date, but I, I'm flexible. I just think, why don't we pick one? No, I think we should pick one day that week, and then one day is a backup in another week, that works for everyone.
But are you planning on attending the, the board, the regularly scheduled meeting on the evening of the fifteenth?
Well, I think so, but we haven't figured out our summer.
Would it be more probable then, that if we schedule the meeting on Friday, that you potentially would be here? Does that make sense, like if you?
Yeah, I know what you're asking, and the thing is, is that we're not doing something that I can plan around a board meeting. We have a event that we may have to go to.
Action.
Yeah, so I try not to ever miss a board meeting, I'm always here. But, you know, why don't, why don't we pick one that we?
The thirteenth.
Let's do Tuesday the thirteenth, and then why don't we also say, you know, Wednesday the seventh, or Tuesday the sixth, or something as a backup?
So Tuesday the thirteenth, what time?
I prefer earlier, rather than later.
Could we do eight to noon? Jan, I know you have weekday.
That's a long stretch. See, I'm not, I don't share your opinion of pushing them together in the same meeting. I, I don't share that opinion. I, I think a two-hour stretch, we're doing goal setting, and then to try to do the policies at the same time. Well.
Could we take a break, could we take a brain break?
No, I mean, I'm just talking.
Have a no business type. Break or lunch?
I mean, I, I prefer it just because if I do something during the day, I have takeoff. I, I lose a lot of work time, so it's easier for me to just have it on one day and get it done. But, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'll, I'll go with what the majority of the board wants to do.
We doing all three, or we doing just two?
We doing?
We do two, and that'd be my recommendation, because I have to also prep for it too. So prepping for three different things would be a little rough. So the evaluation board policy workshop, and then we can look for a date. I'm sorry, well, evaluation, goal setting, yeah.
I really don't think we have a lot on protocols, though, we had like one or two things to, to.
Although I wasn't even addressing protocols.
Well, those were the three things, so protocol, board policies, and goal setting. And if we don't have a lot on protocol, because we've, we're going to have another protocol meeting, and there's very little that was still left to discuss. And we're all doing such a great job with protocols, I think that's like a, a twenty-minute item, so.
Nothing's twenty minutes with this group, believe me. Your guy's track record is not twenty minutes.
Well, maybe we need a timed agenda.
So I'll say, can we do goal setting in an hour? I mean, is that too short? What, how many po- what policies, what was one of your policies when we had it on?
Policy list is getting longer, but I would say typically, you know, we do an hour to an hour and a half in policy workshop. We could do an hour. You can try an hour for a goal setting.
Then if we don't get through stuff, we can pick a second date, is that?
We'll just do in order of goal setting first, board policy workshop an hour later. And then if we don't get through that, then we table the rest of the items.
I'd start at eight.
All right, with a three-hour block, if we have ninety minutes for goal setting, ninety minutes for policies, and thirty minutes for protocols.
Not doing protocols. Are you cramming too much in?
Yeah.
Just cramming too much in.
Like not do protocols again, just do them on an annual basis. Are we all okay with that, because?
Start at eight, you first suggested eight, start at eight.
Yeah, it's a little tricky for me.
You ju- you said eight.
No, I said nine.
Who said eight?
You said eight, I said nine.
Eight. You want, you want nine? That's what they want.
Okay, nine to noon, um, thirteenth, and is the backup the sixth?
If that worked with what you're gonna have going on? Or you're gonna?
The sixth work for us. My calendar just shows, we can just rearrange a couple of things on that date, but.
Many more things on there.
Yeah, we can move those.
I mean, I could do any, I'm just pick that randomly.
No, no, it actually, Tuesday is fine, because, you know, doing stuff on a Monday is rough, but Tuesday the sixth would be, Thursday and Friday don't work.
Of that week.
Of that week, and Wednesday's a little rough. So, yeah, Tuesday would be fine on the sixth, we can, so people can check their calendars, and then let us know for some reason that the thirteenth won't work. That would be the. Yeah, we can block that. So priority-wise, is the sixth the pri- the best for folks, or the thirteenth? I know, Joan, you probably can't answer that, but there.
Yeah, the thirtieth is better for me than the sixth, I hate to say. I, I'm looking at the dates on my calendar, and it's six through the thirteenth, maybe one week.
Why don't we, if we do six and thirteen, and then if for some reason you, how soon will you know, do you?
Very soon, like in the week.
So that's perfect, so we'll central six and thirteenth, and then as soon as you find out, if we have to shift it to the thirtieth, we can do that.
Yeah, I'll work around, I mean, I'll do my best to, to make it work.
That was. Of your own.
Oh, you're out of town on the sixth, okay, so.
We can do, we can move the seventh if we have to, with seventh available, I'd rather have the seventh, actually. We can move it.
Do we have any time that week?
We can move the time.
I should, should be here in the seventh.
Oh, so why don't we do the seventh, three? Okay, the seventh.
Seventh is the backup to the thirteenth.
Yeah.
Everybody have other conflicts.
Good afternoon that day as well. Oh, yeah, you're doing deliveries. And one? You guys can eat while I talk.
We say nine to eleven on the, nine to twelve on the thirteenth?
Yeah, nine to.
Now, the, the seventh is a second choice.
Right, first choice is the thirteenth. Yes. For the seventh, so the seventh, we need to give a little bit of time on that day, so if we could start at eleven, that would be beneficial. Yes, ma'am. So we'll block out from eleven on, so we'll send out a hold for both of those, and then you could just email myself and Victoria. If for some reason, once you find something out, then we'll communicate that to the rest of the board. Thank you for trying to get on this earlier, and it's, it's rough when we're not all together, kind of talking about who can move what, and including ourselves. So thank you for taking the time. No worries.
And, and I just wanted to confirm and clarify on the board protocols, we are deferring a second meeting on that this year. So we will, we are happy with the work we've done on protocols, and we will not be meeting on that again until when it shows on our governance calendar, which is January or February.
We have a workshop in September, currently un- undefined, I guess, sorry to get late. So, and October, so when we, we could look at and have a discussion about doing them, doing it at that point, taking a half hour during the workshop. We usually set aside two hours for a topic, we could use a half hour just to talk at, at a policy wor- or at that time to tackle that, if need be.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not trying to schedule a second meeting, because it's very, it's really problematic, everybody is so busy, every.
So that's already on the calendar, it's already booked as a, as an evening, so we can just go ahead and do that, if that's the interest of the board.
Put one in, right, on the thirteenth? Okay, so we have, uh, Section fourteen, Governance Reporting, Board Member Reports.
Thank you, President Vickers. My report is as follows, I attended a, the district committee meeting on the pool modernization, that was May twenty-ninth. I really enjoyed the recognition event last week, just looking out at all the, the faces of the families, the faces of the students, I mean, everybody was just filled with pride and joy. It just really warmed my heart and kind of re-centered me on the work, so I appreciate that. A reminder from California School Boards for Performing Arts. If any of our performing arts groups want to consider performing at the Annual Education Conference, the deadline for submission is coming up on Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. So because the conference is in Anaheim, I really would love to see some of our performing arts people apply to, to present, that'd be so cool to see Laguna Beach students on stage in Anaheim. So I wanted to highlight that, and then a couple of highlights on school power. As your representative, I'm going to give you their year-end update. There are four bullets, one, they awarded fifty-seven grants totaling two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand for the year. They administer the after-school program that Dr. Hatchell mentioned, that was two-hundred-and-sixty-eight classes, that's a lot of classes. They provided a hundred and fifty families with essential needs like backpacks and clothing and gas cards and groceries, it's a lot of families, and a lot of gift cards, or however they're providing them. And they helped a hundred and twenty parents connect through reading parenting-focused books. They read three books this year, and they obviously provided the books, even if people are still reading them, I know some are still on my bedside table. They're definitely not my vacation reading, but, you know, when I, when I don't know where else to turn parenting teenagers, I pick up those books, so there we go. And so kudos to school power and all the good work they do, and that's my report for tonight.
Um, I was really honored to be able to speak and present at CCA's Adult Graduation with ninety-two students, mostly in the medical field. I went early so I could meet a lot of the students and their proud families, and of course, they're adults, so many of them have young children that are so happy their mom or dad is becoming a dental assistant, or medical assistant, or, you know, something in that area. I attended the CSBA meet, uh, online meeting for what part a board should play in textbook material adoption and material, local material adoption. And, you know, maybe we can talk about that sometime. I also attended the, so two- I also attended the, it was a two-day festival kept with Cal Matters. And a lot of it, we were talking about jobs that are upcoming, so many in the medical field. And we don't have anywhere near the number of people needed even thinking about it. So what a lot of places up north are doing is bringing it to the middle school. And they're not, you know, they do the career talks like we do, but they're actually taking the kids on field trips to show them different medical facilities and try to get kids excited about that because then they can start taking those classes in high school. And I also learned about, by talking to people, we, you know, we wonder how our students are doing after they graduate from high school. And some other people in districts talked to me about some of the apps that they use to get feedback back from their students that have been very successful, so maybe we could talk about that sometime. And when we had our event, you know, it was so lovely, because one of our um, young women that got an award, Chloe. We had um, President Vickers and I had been able to see her beautiful dress that she designed and sewed and was the model for, and so it was really fun to be able to talk to her about that. And I went to the CCA meeting and we, for the first time, Laguna had kids go to the HOSA competition. We had six kids go, and so that was terrific. That's, you know, in the healthcare field.
I attended the Long Beach High School Foundation event. One of our winners is right there. $463,000 was given away, plus uh, one of our students got a 210 um, Navy ROT, Navy Reserve uh, thing, which was just, just impressive as far as. It was one of mine also. I was glad that the Navy people left, you know, they were baby before me because I didn't know what, what, what they would think that he was getting a gay lesbian scholarship and also uh, the Navy thing. But uh, he was a kid who had, he was a kid that had the brother, and uh, it was, it was a really good advocate. But it was really an echo sexually, but it went on and on. I, I was glad that I was number 58 out of, uh, uh, yeah. And and I got to leave at eight something, and so uh, but it's a great event. No, I did not, but I should have, I, I should have wip- up my cap and gown. I mean, like, you know, I never get to wear that, and so, and it was cold, you know. Um, I also went to the PTA council meeting on this, this week. And uh, it was, the nice thing was it was very fast because they did it at the luncheon. So we, we had, we had a great luncheon, and they're such a great group, and uh, the old leadership's leaving, which is sad. But the nice thing is some of their kids are going to the high school, so I'm hoping that their enthusiasm will go on to the high school. Um, I did talk to one person who was disappointed that we had changed the calendar dates uh, because they, they're having a hard time getting um, coverage for their kid during Thanksgiving. And I was just wondering, uh, I went over if, if we could talk with the Boys and Girls Club to see if we could pay for something as. Well, this guy told me that there were, they were not, that they were, they didn't have any programs as far as that, that week. So uh, if we could get a clarification.
Yeah, we'll talk to them, but they, um, yeah, we'll talk to them.
I have no report.
Thank you. We had um, great uh, open houses at both El Moro and Top of the World. Very well attended, lots of students showing their parents everything in the classrooms. Classrooms were loaded with things, and one thing I noticed uh, in the schools, that's the joint project we did on the monsters with the high school art students. And they uh, they were great. They blew them up and they were really creative. And it was, I understood that for some of the little kids, it was, you know, a little intimidating with those big high school kids. But it uh, it was a really good collaboration. The, uh, I wanted to, same as Kelly, I think the, one of the best recognition meetings that we had last week. And I already thanked Victoria and, or part of her team. I think whatever they did with our CFPs, we had such a great turnout, which really added to it being so successful, so I'm very appreciative of that. I also attended the honors. Um, I didn't stay that long, so I, it does get cold out there, but it's interesting to uh, I was standing near Anna Karen and I kept giving her little commentaries on the different people and who they were and why they were there. And she said, do you know all these people? I said, no, but if you're in the community for a long time, you do, you know, they stick with you, because these people have been donating to the scholarships for many, many years. And it, it, it's just a great opportunity for them to share why it's so important to them to continue that. As uh, Member Perry mentioned, we had a CCA meeting and um, they did share the visuals on the students going to the HOSA and also the three young women that had the design awards for the, and I don't know about our student, but the others, they said they wore them to the, to their prom. The dresses that they created, so it was nice, really nice to see that. The other program that they reported on is directed toward adult immigrants and getting training in dental assisting. And they've been very successful in taking in these folks and training them and having, getting them to have a meaningful uh, job. And they're hoping to expand it into more of the medical fields to get more, you know, approval for that and the grants for that. So, you know, and it's um, as the year ends down, it's just so busy. It's, it's, there's so many things to attend, and I'm really appreciative that they let us know. And hopefully, they, they know that we all can't get to everything, but uh, thank you all for, for doing the best you can with supporting our schools. Uh, motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, your report.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Oh, faux pas. Thank you. Second, student vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Board members, all in favor? Aye. Thank you.